I'd like to call the meeting of the Urbana City Council to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Oh, God.
You got the bad chair again? You can change chairs.
I'll call the roll first.
The problem with those chairs is they were bought on low bid.
Oh, God, I'm too old for this. Ms. Ammons?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson?
Here.
Mr. Madigan?
Here, but I can't see you.
Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe? Mayor Pressley?
Here. Okay, the first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, which is December 15th, 2014.
So moved.
A motion by Marlin, seconded by Ammons. Any additions or corrections? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries. Are there any additions to the agenda? See any petitions and communications? I have many people here. The person who's listed on the agenda is Scott Dossett for the Folk and Roots Festival. Would you like to start, Scott?
Hello, everyone. Scott Dossett, 501 East High Street in Urbana. And I'm the current secretary for the Champaign-Urbana Folk and Roots Festival. And I'm providing this report as part of an agreement with the city regarding a matching grant so generously given to us for our 2014 festival. So I'm gonna run a, you've got the report in the packet, I'm gonna run some slides and kinda talk through basically the post-project evaluation. I would note that in that, page three of that document, I got the dates of the festival wrong. They were the 7th and 8th, not the 8th and 9th, so just bring that to your attention. All right, downtown Urbana, the 7th and 8th of November, we had our sixth annual Folk and Roots Festival. We want to report about the 5K matching grant and thank all the businesses and individuals that were involved. Primary sponsor, the City of Urbana, City of Urbana Public Arts Program, and all of the rest of the good people on the U of I campus and in town that are listed here. Without their support, the festival wouldn't have happened, and we greatly appreciate them putting their shoulders to the wheel with us, a small volunteer group that's kept the festival together for about six years. Reading now, "The sixth annual CU Folk and Roots Festival was held in downtown Urbana on the 7th and 8th of November 2014. Funds provided by the City of Urbana under a matching grant," note this as a separate from the Urbana Public Arts Program funds, "were used to pay various costs for venue rental, performer payment contracts, and festival advertising. This grant impacted the festival by expanding our performer selection options, securing necessary venue contracts, and providing funds to advertise in local and regional media, including MTD bus ads, WILL radio advertising, social media boosting, and News Gazette local and regional paid ads. It's difficult to compile the number of hours spent in completing the project. The nine steering committee members spent hundreds of hours each, and volunteer hours required to run the festival venues alone total over 500. Individual venue counts indicate this year's festival attendance numbered approximately 1,300 venue uses. Note, an absolute number of clients served is impossible to calculate, as it is common for clients to use multiple venues throughout the festival. There were many collaborating partners for this year's festival, starting in the summer during the annual Sweet Corn Festival with the Urbana Business Association. Their contribution allowed a Folk and Roots stage on Race Street. Other cooperation continued through the festival itself, as local performers, sound engineers, and citizens contributed in making the festival a great success. The importance of our partners from the businesses such as the Common Ground Food Co-op, The Iron Post, Rose Bowl, and Pizza M cannot be overstated. Without their efforts, this event would not have happened. As usual, our partners at the Urbana Free Library donated the use of space on both floors as well as room for an outreach exhibit. In addition, the availability and generosity of the staff and management of the Urbana Landmark Hotel cannot be overemphasized. The entire festival benefited from a larger, more centralized volunteer-performer check-in space that the landmark offered. There is no comparable facility in downtown Urbana. Finally, our festival itself could not exist without the generosity, willingness to labor, and talent of the musicians, many local, who actually make the music happen. We are all indebted to their creative spirit and sense of community." And that's the end of my report. Questions or comments?
Yes, Dennis?
Yeah, Scott, thanks for bringing the report in. And I really do appreciate not only the images that show, you know, the variety of musical events that occurred and the crowds that came and the diversity of it all, but I really appreciate, you know, the really complete breakdown of the financial structure of the festival, what the funds pay for, what the costs are that you have to incur. And it's just really fascinating to see how deep and how far the funds that are provided to the festival, either through the city's donations or through private, reach into the community. And so I thought it was a really good summary. I don't think we often see such a detailed account of where city money is spent, so this really struck me as being significantly well-prepared, so thanks a lot.
Yeah, well, thank you. Well, I have to actually thank our treasurer, Nancy Livingston. I mean, a lot of the bulk of this report was literally verbatim. I thought about going in and trying to kind of make subcategories or try to do some interpretation and frankly, just kinda ran out of steam, but her effort at keeping our book straight was really, really, really good this year, so thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Scott.
Right.
Um, yes, there's a question for you. Go ahead.
I really appreciate the detail here, too. Obviously, it's an outstanding event, great for Urbana. Just one question on the detail. Sheridan, Kansas City, Missouri, for $495.
I would have to look at a sheet, I didn't bring that list. That's probably a performer contract. What category is it in?
Uh, Discover Card charges.
Yeah, yeah. Well, actually, Folk Alliance was in Kansas this year. One of the ways that we kicked this off, there's this really neat thing called Folk Alliance, and basically, they take over a hotel. And so people get about 20 to 30-minute presentations at max, and usually have small MP3 files to give away and stuff like that. And so at least two of our people go, and you can basically shop traveling folk and roots performers in one spot. And we've really, that's something we have to do every year, because that's where people who are hitting the road make themselves known, and you can kinda get a flavor for what they do, and then they stop and you go to room 105, and you know, you get another show, kind of like, so.
No, that totally makes sense to me. I appreciate the explanation.
Yeah, sure. Is that all? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Scott. Okay, we have a number of people that want to speak tonight, so what I'd like to do is limit people to three minutes. First person I have listed is Christopher Wilcock, who wants to speak during the discussion, so you wanna wait until it comes up. We have a pretty short, pretty short agenda here, so if you wanna talk now, that would be fine. Christopher Wilcock? Okay, Gina Paluso?
Good evening. My name's Gina Paluso, and I live here in Urbana. Just so that it's out in the open, I am a member of the HPC, but I'm here representing myself, and I'm here mainly to talk about the letter that was submitted by the petitioner by the owners of ZTA after the HPC meeting happened on December 3rd. There was an additional letter of protest that was submitted as part of your packet on December 10th that we at the HPC did not have at the time of our meeting, so I'll restrict my comments to that. So I'm here in support of nomination of the ZTA house, of it being landmarked. And again, as I said, I'm gonna restrict my comments to stuff that was written, or what was written in the letter of the 10th. As you know, or as you, you know, by reading the packet, you'll see that the HPC did vote to have this building landmarked. The first thing I wanted to talk about was in the owner's letter on page 2 of 7, and I think it's page like 41 or 44 of the packet. The second paragraph under Joseph William Royer, because there's been some argument as to whether this was a Royer-designed building or designed by a different architect that worked in his firm. The second paragraph says, "Absolutely no evidence was presented to contradict the statement in the article and the testimony by Mr. Adams last year and Mr. Cahill this year is consistent with the conclusion that Mr. Smith was the true architect responsible for the building's design." So I did a little research after I read this last night and found on the Urbana School District 116's website that there's an Urbana High School pictorial history, and on that page, it says that Hubert Smith was a draftsman and designer for Royer from 1914 to 1919, and then from 1920 to 1930, he was a member of the firm Royer, Danley, and Smith in charge of the design and drafting room.
You have one minute.
Okay, so that's the first thing I wanted to discuss. The owners of the house say that it's gonna be exorbitantly expensive to fix this house up. $2.5 million is needed to renovate this. If this house was listed on the National Register of Historic Places, a 20% tax credit could be taken to offset the money spent for renovation, so they could get up to a half a million dollars back from the federal government to fix this house up. Exhibit B from, which is exhibit F-19, talks about how the location of this doesn't really matter. Oh, sorry, the owners say that the location of this property isn't so significant, but in their own exhibit B, the second paragraph talks about what a wonderful location this is, that it was chosen specifically by the sorority for this location to be placed there. I know I'm out of time. Could I get maybe one more minute? I'm just about done.
I'll move for another minute.
And I'll second.
Great, thanks very much. So again, on exhibit B, which is exhibit F-19 in your packet, it states that the sorority specifically chose this location because it was so incredible. There were so many other sororities being built in that location, so I don't think that there's really an argument that this location is not significant to the city. And then in the, on page 5 of 7 of the owner's letter of protest, they talk a lot about, again, the cost. And I just wanted to, you know, the property owner is looking to possibly sell this property, and the city council and the mayoral goals, there are two things that could be in the goals. Sorry, I'm losing my train of thought. One is sustainability, keeping this house, reworking it, not having it be in a landfill, using it as it is, as a beautiful, the beautiful building that it is. Secondly, in the city council goals, it talks about historic preservation as part of the quality of life, promoting historic preservation. So I hope that we'll take both of those goals seriously when we're making, when you guys have this discussion later. And one last thing, the owner talked about restrictions that landmarking this building will have on the way that they can use this building or how they can sell this building. You know, the HPC is really good about getting applications to make changes, and I think the track record is like 98% that anything that's brought to the commission as being something that someone would like to rework on one of their buildings has been accepted. So 2% of, I think it's one request for changes has been denied over all the years that the HPC has been in existence. So I don't know that there are actually any restrictions that landmarking this building would cause. Thanks for the time.
Thank you very much. Bishop King James and Reverend Dr. Evelyn B. Underwood do not wish to speak, but for the record, they want to say they're still concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problem. Thomas Garza?
Hi. My name's Thomas Garza. I'm a resident of Champaign. I'm also the director of the Preservation and Conservation Association, and I'd like to speak just briefly on behalf of the historic preservation nomination for the sorority house. There are other people who are much more qualified to talk about the details of the property and what makes it historic or not historic. The only point I wanted to make is, it seems to be, from what I've heard about the last discussions about this, and what seems to be the case in the current discussions, is how we're valuing the property, or how we or you are being asked to value this property. And on one hand, you have the citizens of the community who are saying pretty universally that it's important to us that it, its historic value be taken into consideration, and on the other hand, you have the owners who don't live here, who are saying, "Well, yeah, maybe it's historic, maybe it's not," but that kind of doesn't really matter, because what matters to us is whether we can make money on it, or whether we can, might lose money on it, or something. And so I think it behooves you to really consider the needs of the community when you discuss this, and think about what is important to the citizens who live here, because this is part of the fabric, this building and other historic properties like that are part of the fabric of our community. We see them every day, they're, look out the window when you drive by, or even if you live nearby one. And it matters to us how these places look, as well as how they're cared for and what happens to them. So, yeah, it might, it might make more money if they did something else with the property. They could pave it over and turn it into a parking lot and charge people money to park there, but that wouldn't be in the interests of the people in the neighborhood, and it wouldn't be in the interests of the community. So I just think, what I would like is for you to consider that.
You have one minute.
That the needs of the people in the community are paramount in this instance, and not the needs of somebody that lives somewhere else and whose interest is more financial than otherwise. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Robert Namath? Steve Share?
My name is Steve Share. I live at 703 West Vermont. I emailed, I think ended up some of you. I thought I had a full list of the council, but I may have missed some of you, so I will briefly try to touch on some of the points that I made there. It was interesting to hear the quotation from the owner's recent letter that was just given, that said, "Location doesn't matter," because one of the points that I think makes this property particularly valuable for preservation is exactly its location. There is, if you will, a sort of Greek row as you head down Lincoln Avenue between more or less Ohio, or somewhere, Iowa, I guess, and Pennsylvania, and this Zeta Tau Alpha house anchors the end of that. It's really sort of the kind of capstone. As you enter the city, coming up Lincoln from Windsor, you, you know, that's the first large historic property that you face, and I think it really presents, you know, the quality of life that was mentioned that historic preservation gives to us. Reading the News Gazette article about this preservation and the pending sale, where the owner, the potential buyer, said, "We don't intend to, you know, tear it down, but it would cost too much, and we might have an effect of this on this and everything." But I would like to point out that the last time this designation came before the council, the owners mentioned that they had no intention to sell the property, that plan seems to have changed, and, you know, people, things happen, plans change, and failing a historic designation for this property, we have no guarantee that, you know, whatever the intentions of the owners and the buyer.
You have one minute.
Buyer now are, that that will remain the plans without a designation. I'd like to just add, for the benefit of the owners and everything, that, you know, longer ago than I like to remember, when I was in college, I actually worked as a waiter at the Zeta Tau Alpha Sorority at my alma mater, and have a great affection, a lot of friends who were members of that sorority. So I appreciate, you know, that concern, but I think that preserving this really beautiful and, you know, noteworthy building here in Urbana is really an important component to preserving the quality of life that we have here as citizens of Urbana. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Carolyn Baxley?
I wrote my comments down, so I don't ramble. I would like to encourage you to support the landmark nomination for the house for the following reasons. It's a very important structure in the fabric of the west Urbana neighborhood. It meets not one, but multiple criteria for designation. It's eligible for listing on the National Register of Historic Places. Your planning staff has recommended designation. The Historic Preservation Commission voted unanimously to designate the house, and the most important reason, I think, is that designating it supports the goal of the comprehensive plan. Goal number one for Urbana's established neighborhoods is to preserve and enhance their character by encouraging investment in older properties to help maintain their appearance and long-term potential. Goal number 12.2 of the section on Urbana's unique character is very clear. Pursue the establishment of historic landmark and/or district status for sites that have contributed to the history of Urbana. I ask that you put aside peripheral arguments that have no bearing on whether you vote yes or no on this issue. The fact that the owners and interested parties do not want it landmarked is really not relevant to the case, so please don't let that cloud your thinking. The house either is or isn't a historic landmark. It either does or doesn't meet the criteria for designation. If this property is actively marketed for sale, buyers may come forward who are sympathetic to its plight and to historic preservation and the good of the neighborhood. This is a very clear-cut case, so please support your own expert staff and the professionals on your Historic Preservation Commission, and designate the house as a landmark.
Thank you. Charlie has a question for you.
Carolyn, how many designated properties do you own at this point? Are you and Norman?
Two, no, one, I guess, because we had two others, but we sold those. We had three others.
So you were able to sell without any problem, then?
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't think it has any effect on the sale. If it's a good property, if it's renovated properly, you know, whoever buys it from Zeta Tau Alpha shouldn't have any trouble, you know, reselling it, and I don't think they'll have any trouble selling it, you know, if it's actively marketed.
And in terms of your experiences with the HPC, in terms of getting necessary waivers, doing work that was needed to properties that you've had or currently have, can you give us a little on that?
Of course, Norman does all that, so I'd have to defer to him, but we've had no problems at all. In fact, the application process has been as smooth as silk, as far as I know, so.
And are there additional costs that you've had to bear because of the designation, or?
No.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question for you. Do you think that historic designation would boost the property's sellability?
Well, it certainly might. You know, I don't know that the use that was discussed in the newspaper, whether it has a bearing on that or not, and I'm certainly not opposed to that use. I think it would be a very fine use for the building, but I don't think that landmarking it is gonna hurt their ability to do that with the building, and I don't think, you know, that it would be a problem.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Sure.
Rich Cahill?
Hello, I'm Richard Cahill. I live at 307 South Orchard in Urbana, and I strongly support this nomination. On one ground, I did serve on a preservation commission for a lot of years, and this is one of the better, well-written nominations I've seen, and I'd see it matches a number of criteria. It's hard to follow Carolyn, but it kinda led me into something the packet was involved with. One of the early, first nominations was a Ricker House on the corner of Green and Kohler. And it was a landmark when it went up for sale, and we had a couple come in from, moved in here from University of Missouri, lived in the Taylors, lived in the house for a number of years, they moved to Arizona. We had a new family move in with three young children, and they lived there a number of years. Now we're on our third family. It's grown since they've lived in that house, and they all moved out, moved here from Texas A&amp;M and Penn State. So, yes, it didn't hurt at all. It probably helped the house on Kohler and Green, making that a local landmark, because then people come in and they know that the community cares about that house, and that the neighbors, as they go by, they see the plaque and they say, "What a good job." Too bad Norm's not here, but the Halsted House over by Cana Church, it's incredible what that house looks like, and the addition of the little porch on the south side is really adds to the character of the house, the new paint scheme, a house that was totally kind of obscured. Now it's a local landmark, it's rented by international students. Norm can't, probably wants to take two more houses on, because he's got, he's had such a good niche, and students appreciate the history of that house. And so there's two examples with a few blocks of here of how being a local landmark has helped these houses. And an argument was made by the opposition that, "Well, there's other houses on Lincoln Avenue, why pick on Zeta?"
You have one minute.
Yes, there's two or three other houses, but that's, it's a whole corridor, and to me, the Zeta House is the anchor on the south end. You come down Lincoln Avenue, you see the President's House, off to the east, you come down a couple more blocks, and there's this house. So it's all in context, and it needs to be reserved. Thank you.
Thank you. Jan Puckett?
Hi. I'm Jan Puckett, a lifelong member of Champaign. I'm a member of Zeta Tau Alpha. This is my house. I've served as general advisor to the chapter. I've served as housing corps, which is the local Alpha Kappa House Corporation, and I've been on that board. I was president of the board when Zeta International closed the chapter. We were a house without a chapter. Theta Chi was a chapter without a house. We made connections, we worked out a program together, the alumni and students of Theta Chi, and signed a four-year contract for rental of the property. The men of Theta Chi were respectful of me, the property, the house. I had no negative relationships or any problems, and I strongly want to tell everyone that I do not believe any reports that indicate that there was damage done to the house or property by them. Jim Estrillo, who was a friend of my brother, had worked with housing codes and regulations because being a sorority house in a city means that you have to follow the city codes as well as the university codes. So I requested that he help us, and he worked for the house corporation and for Theta Chi separately, keeping the property in good shape, meaning they paid for any damage that they did, and we took care of any things that needed to be done from a landlord standpoint. After the untimely death of Jim, I left the board. The contract was still in effect. When Theta Chi was able to build their chapter because of the size of the house and the grandeur of the house, they had suddenly sufficient strength that they of the house, they had suddenly sufficient strength that they contacted Zeta International in requesting to buy the property. Zeta did not sell.
You have one minute.
Thank you. And they did try multiple times, and then they moved out of the house in order to find property that was more in line with their goal of ownership. I would love to see this house protected by being placed on the registry. It is a landmark. It's part of the history of Urbana, the history of the university. The architecture is incredible. Please help us protect what I consider our castle by putting her on the registry. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Fran Damaris.
Hello, I'm Fran Damaris, lifelong resident in Champaign with just a couple of glitches. I am speaking directly after my sister, so if it sounds like this is all one long dirge, that's the reason. I guess that, when I read the article in the paper that came on Saturday, that's what spurred me to finally take action on this. We had felt all along that the house would be protected, and all the signs were that it would be, but then it sounded as though it might not. So I felt that in honoring not just the house, but also the much older sisters that I came to know in that house, who served on the corporate board many, many, many years, decades, most of them in fact, Gloria Dalton, Libby Lor, Nancy Nash, who were on the board over extended periods of time, during all of the building periods, during the remodels, and in each of those steps, they tried to maintain the integrity of the particular house as it was originally designed. We also had a unique situation with Mildred Spittler Johnson, who lived on Vermont directly across from the house. She lived in one house while she was a tiny child. They moved next door, and she became essentially a private security system. Had anything ever gone wrong with that house, Mildred would have let you know, I assure you. I think that it's very important to understand that the house could have sold way back when. It could have sold when the expiration of the contract with Zeta Chi occurred. There would not have been, as we were told by corporate at that time at the national level, even if they were to recolonize on U of I campus, they never had any intention to come back to that house. So the reality is, they had the chance to sell, they chose not to exercise it, and now they want control over something that's beyond their control.
You have one minute.
So I hope, I hope you will consider strongly the possibility that we need to think of the best interests of our community and not of the best interest of a corporate structure located far, far away. Thank you.
Thank you.
Question.
Okay, there's a question for you here. Mike Madigan.
Mike.
Yeah, so I'm just curious then, your contention that the sorority never intended to re-inhabit the house.
I feel confident that's absolutely right.
I haven't quite finished my question yet. So your contention that they never intended to re-inhabit the house, what would their motivation be to hang on to it then and not sell it when the opportunity presented itself?
I don't know, but to date, that house has never been listed as a sale property by anyone under any circumstance.
No, I understand that. So it makes no sense to me that you would contend that they did not intend to re-inhabit the house when that's, in fact, what they have told us on the record.
All right. Well, you'd have to ask them, but we were told the house was too large and that under the changing circumstances where students had the right to live in apartments much younger than they originally had, that if they were to recolonize, they would take a much smaller structure that was air-conditioned than all the bells and whistles, and that they would never use that house.
Okay, but I mean, you understand my...
I understand completely.
My questioning of that.
Okay. So you can ask them if they're going to come back.
I have, and that was their intention until, you know...
Until the historical designation.
Well, not necessarily. This was up last year, and that was, it was still their intention, it was still their hope. That's at least what they stated. So I'm just trying to reconcile those two things.
Fair enough.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sam Johnson.
I'm Sam Johnson with DLDD Architects, representing Prescott Pollan in the Semper Fi House, and I live in Decatur, Illinois. I'm here to speak against the landmark designation, but not because I think it's an unworthy property. To the contrary, I think it is worthy, but because I think it hinders a wonderful opportunity for the building to begin the next chapter in its life. And to me, this is important because its current unoccupied condition is the biggest threat to the future and its future viability. Prescott Pollen will talk after me about the Semper Fi project, so I'm not going to talk about that. But as a former Marine also, I'm excited about the promise of the Semper Fi House project. I think it could be a wonderful addition to the community, a first in the nation, a model of innovation to be replicated. As a U of I grad, I also love the idea of creating an innovative new program right here at the University of Illinois. I know that the aesthetic goals of Prescott and the program align well with ours as an architectural firm. Preserve the architectural heritage of this structure. We feel strongly about that. We know well how historic facilities can be adaptively reused in a way that honors the architectural heritage while creating a facility of today. We were the architect for the restoration of Harker Hall on the University of Illinois campus, the second oldest building on campus. We won't be part of a project that doesn't strive for design excellence. To us, imagining and designing the next life of an historic structure is extremely rewarding. It's a win-win for the entire community. So back to our objection. It centers on the impact that the designation would have on the project's ability to raise funds. Raising funds to develop a project of this complexity is an arduous task. Having done this myself to create an arts center in an historic building in my hometown, it was extremely difficult. Unfortunately, the requirement to obtain the certificate of appropriateness creates contingent and unknown impacts to the project's costs and schedule, and these requirements are a non-starter for investors looking to choose the strongest investments to meet their investment goals. I believe the community's interests are extremely...
You have one minute.
Thank you. I believe the community's interests are extremely well-served by denying the status and paving the way for the fundraising that will allow the Zeta Tau Alpha House to begin the next chapter in its distinguished life.
You have a question from Dennis Roberts.
So my understanding that you just said that so far, it's a concept, it has no funding, and you don't know if that funding could possibly come together.
I will let, I'll defer that question, if you wouldn't mind, to the project leader, Prescott Pollen, who is also scheduled to speak. He's much closer to that information.
In other terms, you think that the house actually does merit a landmarking if it wasn't for this project that you're conceding?
I like the architecture. I like its context. I think it's a wonderful structure. I do understand that it's in considerable disrepair.
And you also understand that landmarking has no effect on interior restorations?
What I understand about landmarking is that it requires additional administrative procedures for an entity wishing to do, to obtain approval, that are out of the owner's control. The possibilities of a public hearing and the timeframe to meet approvals are the things that dissuade investors.
Have you talked with people who have gone through the process in Urbana?
I haven't.
Okay. Oh, did you have a question, Charlie?
You just basically answered it.
Okay, sorry. Well, thank you very much. Oh, okay. Eric Jacobson has a question for you.
Do you know of any studies on the economic impact of landmarking buildings that show anything other than that increases their value?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand the last part of that question.
Okay, I have gone into, in preparation for this, I've gone into the academic literature on the effect of landmarking buildings on value, the value of those properties and the neighbor properties. And every study that I've been able to find says that the landmarking process increases value. And in the face of that, I'm very puzzled by the reluctance, by the reluctance of investors. I would think that investor, I haven't invested in this type of property, but looking at the studies that I've seen, I would have thought that it would be a plus for potential investors. Could you explain to me why my thinking is wrong?
Yeah. As a practicing architect, going through the approval process creates unknown and contingent expenses and schedule delays. When you add layers to the approval process, you add uncertainty. If you're an investor, it's something that you try and eliminate as you move forward, uncertainty. For instance, there can be, through some form of the process, there can be somebody who at some point decides, that wall is historic. It was what I needed, it was original. You are not aware of all the conditions that will need to be met until you go through the approval process, and that creates additional risk.
Are you referring to an interior wall?
Well, whether it's, you know, whether it's that or whether, let's say there is the need to add an elevator to the facility, that opens up a can of worms, if you will, about location and how that affects. You know, you'd like to, you'd like to see something like that go around the back of a house to provide accessibility to people with disabilities, but it opens the investor up for questioning, second judgment, and approvals beyond their control.
I'll go ahead and ask a question here. Have you actually read Urbana's?
Yes.
Okay, so where in there, what specific part of the language in there do you really think causes you to make the statement that it develops serious unknown potentials?
It's Section 12.6, Certificates of Appropriateness and Economic Hardship. It's the process, and I'm not, you know, I understand from conversations that Prescott has had that there is a wonderful, wonderful track record in Urbana. Prescott's challenge is to find the funding. And when you are subject to the requirement of additional reviews, which include Historic Preservation Commission review, a public hearing, commission action, and then, you know, 50 days calendar, after the public hearing, hold a hearing within 50 calendar days, you know, Prescott would like to be in, in the fall.
Yeah, you know, given your experience with Harker Hall, which is a wonderful piece of work, I find it really hard to believe that getting a certificate of appropriateness really would stand in your way. I really find that hard to believe. It really strikes me, given the experience that your firm has with these kinds of things, it strikes me as a small item and the longer, much more serious issue of just getting out there and raising funds for a quality building.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Brian Adams.
I'm Brian Adams, now of Champaign, Illinois. I just wanted to request your support for the landmarking of this building. I just would like to speak to the question of the architect. I've researched nearly 200 projects by Royer, and I have no question that he had a hand in this, design of this building. I don't think that's really an issue or a question. I've researched buildings here in town, in Iowa, as far east as North Carolina, and there's a very unique aspect to the buildings that Royer's either designed himself or had a major role in designing. In fact, just a few blocks away, there's another fraternity house that's contemporary with the ZTA House, which is the, was designed in the 20s for the university architectural fraternity, which Royer designed. And you can see the very unique whimsical aspects that Royer incorporated into his buildings here and throughout the Midwest and the East. So again, that was the main thing I wanted to address, was to, again, emphasize that this house does very clearly reflect the hand of Royer and his firm. Thank you.
Thank you. Prescott Pollen.
Good evening, Ms. Mayor and members of the council. I appreciate you taking my comments. My name is Prescott Pollen. I'm the acting director for Semper Fi House, Inc. We represent essentially the proudest, fiercest, and most loyal members of our United States that have stepped up to serve, men and women who have essentially demanded nothing yet risked everything and will give everything at a moment's notice to protect our freedom. And that is certainly why I'm here tonight, is a matter of freedom. It is a matter of historic preservation also, but historically preserving that freedom. My grandparents, part of the greatest generation, they built the middle class when they attended college using the GI Bill back in the day when they came out of World War II. And today, it's very sad, an abysmal 57% of those who are enrolled in the GI Bill are using it. There's a lot of missed opportunity. A lot of people drop out. They see the types of students that we have today, and they feel like they don't fit in. And so we've been at this since 2008, searching the nation for an optimal site to place our first Semper Fi House, essentially a place where men and women from the United States Marine Corps, corpsmen that served in the Navy, and other members of the armed forces as applicable and able, can live together and work together and study together and find a communal living environment where their education can benefit. And this was a dream property come true. Certainly, a former tenant requests that we protect her castle, and ma'am, I assure you that I have every intention to do so. We will protect that castle. We don't intend to tear it down. And there is a man by the name of David Brinkley that made a statement. A successful man is one who can lay a foundation with the bricks that others have thrown at him. And I would love to do that here, but we face a very common objection from those who are willing and interested in investing in us, and that is that they are too concerned with the historic designation for this property. It would preclude them from investing the money for us to obtain that property so that we can proceed on to a source called Fundrise.com and through crowdsourcing, raise the additional funds to go through a renovation. I love this property. I think it's beautiful. I think it should absolutely be preserved in the context of which it stands.
You have one minute.
And we intend to do so, but putting that historic designation will absolutely hinder our progress in doing it. I find it also ironic that a $500,000 tax credit is touted by the historic preservation advocates. Well, it's a nonprofit, that doesn't apply to us. And also asserting that this is not in the interest of residents, you've got to think bigger here. This is a huge opportunity for Urbana to have a national-scale opportunity to set a foundation for the first Semper Fi House that would be used around the nation. Our residents are men and women who have served honorably. They would be excellent members of your community to come in and participate in the Urbana area. I can only see great benefit for the residents of here. You can assert that, yes, ZTA is from, far away from its national chapter, but this is a project that the people of Urbana can own and be proud of, and that historic designation would stand in the way. So all I ask in conclusion is simply that you take into consideration that heart in the gray areas of law do affect the application and the rule of law, much like before a police officer gives a ticket, he thinks about intent. The intent here is for us to preserve this house, to build it, to make it better, to bring it into its next chapter. And with your help in denying this historic preservation status, I believe that's the best thing to do.
Thank you. Charlie?
I'm still trying to wrap my head around the issue of fundraising.
Yes, sir.
As the son of a DI, and having spent the first 16 years of my life essentially in the military, I'm familiar with the generosity of people like my father, who gives what little he can to a number of organizations like yours, among others. And I just don't think fundraising will be an issue. You know, if you put it out there as a historic property, that you're going to save a historic property, and you're going to do everything you can to save a historic property, veterans aren't going to turn you down.
If you've got the million dollars, sir, I'd love to have that done.
I don't, I really don't think you will have a problem. I know the generosity of veterans like my father. I know the generosity of, of veterans like my father, who give, you know, the nickel and dime that they can on the little that they make in retirement. And, and so, I, I just don't see the objection, sorry.
Absolutely, and, and I agree with you to that extent, but that's the second phase. To get to the crowdfunding, we have to be able to make it to Fundrise.com. That means we have to obtain the property first in order to qualify for that platform. That's where the veterans can give. By law, they must contribute in a way that's in accordance with the crowdfunding laws that we have here in the United States.
I, I don't think you'll have a problem. I think you're just not willing to spin it right.
Okay, thank you very much. Oh, there's another question. Who's first here? Eric's first, okay.
I think I read that you're projecting to potential investors a return of something like 12% to 14%, is that correct?
That's our requirement. In order to be on the platform, we have to project an ROI of 12% to 14% on Fundrise so that they will be interested in taking up this campaign.
I'm, I'm interested in how you, as a 501(c)(3), seem to sort of be functioning like a commercial startup. How, how does, how does this hybrid work?
So we're not, we're actually paying on a loan essentially, that we're getting from the Fundrise platform. So it's much like a bank is willing to loan money. They're willing to loan on our renovations that we're proposing as a nonprofit, which we absolutely are. I make no dime sitting here today. I have my own, you know, separate full business that I run with my family. And it is not a reflection of, of this property. It is, I assure you, a 501(c)(3).
Would you in the future intend to, as a 501(c)(3), request an exemption from property taxes?
I'm, I'm trying to carefully phrase my words here. Just on, on simply, I can't make forward promises of what we would do. You know, we, in, in terms of the financial structure, I'm not allowed to, to state what we will or won't do because there's many options to us that we have to make the best decision at a given time, of course. Would we love a deduction? Yes, of course. We want to, you know, save our investors, if you will, the people that donate to our organization. We want to save them the most money. And that's another reason why I'm here sitting, you know, saying that we don't want to tear this property down. In my opinion, that's, that's a foolish thing for us to do. The Marine Corps makes the most of the minimal resources that it has. The same would apply to our organization. We've got a perfectly great house that, on the outside that's there. We want to take what is, is there and essentially rework the interior so it can make it livable again for its residents. And it is in absolute shambles right now.
Now, you got your 501(c)(3) approximately eight years ago?
In 2008, yes, with the help of Professor Lynn Green from Babson College, taught for entrepreneurship.
But it, and, and your intention always was to build these Semper Fi houses or to?
Yes, we've looked on the West Coast, the East Coast, and finally here in central Illinois. This seems to be the most feasible site for our first one.
Okay, so you, you've been over the last, I guess, 2008, six and a half, seven years, you've been, you've been seeking the right opportunity?
Yes, with a number of false starts, that's correct.
What do you think of the, do you have an opinion about how well the University of Illinois supports veteran students?
Absolutely, it's, the reason this is perfectly selected is it's one of the, a few Marine Corps ROTC programs in the nation that exists, which most places do not have. They have a Navy ROTC where you can go, but not a Marine Corps ROTC program. So the U of I is very unique, it's, I, I think there's only 30 some programs like it.
But, but this house would be occupied mostly by veterans, or, or as opposed to people who are, or, or would it be also ROTC students?
Right, so Officer Candidate School Bound or, you know, ROTC bound students, both would, would be able to live there, whether they participate in the Marine Corps ROTC option or not, just the intent that they become a Marine Corps officer. So there's a great cultural transition as well. You have these returning veterans that are enlisted warriors that essentially can pass on the esprit de corps to those future officers of Marines. So it's a very good hybrid. And it, it's something that we've never seen before in terms of the, the type of residents that could live there.
Now, the studies that I looked at, academic studies, that I try, I try to always research objective things.
Sure.
And so I've seen a couple of studies where veterans are surveyed as to what is, what are the most important supports that they have for success in, as, as students. And it's certainly important for them to have support from other veterans, but that actually is less important than support from a wide group of friends, some of whom are veterans, some of whom are not, as well as other aspects of the institution. Are you at all concerned that a completely marine living arrangement would be in any way detrimental to, to, to the veteran, you know, transitioning into civilian life?
Not at all, I think it absolutely eases that transition because you have people that have shared common suffrage and, and essentially, you know, had similar trials that they can relate to. So when they have a problem, rather than, you know, knocking on the door down the way of some peer that knows nothing about having served in the military and being stuck in campus housing where the drinking is prevalent and is frequent, this certainly is a detracted environment for those veterans to live in. Whereas we can provide something much more supportive with an additional bonus of having engaged activities that are constantly there. So you're always having this, you know, buddy system, if you will. You know, the wellness checks, if someone needs it, just to make sure that they're doing all right. And it, and it's not like, you know, anyone's crazy here, but simply, you know, how, how are they doing with homework? Well, it's a lot better to have another fellow veteran check in and see, you know, are they succeeding with their academic studies? That's an important question that a lot of the times in the dorms is not asked. It's, hey, do you want to go to the party? Not, hey, have you gotten your homework done? And so that cultural piece can, can be adapted so that they are very successful in that environment.
Okay, Bill Brown?
Sir?
Yeah, I, I think that's, it'd be a great reuse, it'd be a great project, if you could, if you could bring it forward. I have a couple more questions about the funding. I'm a little concerned that you're a little too focused maybe on Fundrise, and maybe there'd be other options for you. So you were incorporated in 2008 in Washington, I guess, and then?
That's correct.
According to your website, and since 2011, you've been looking particularly at the U of I.
Yes.
So has, has this house just never come up on your radar before this time?
No, it has not, and we've been working with the Coldwell Banker Group here. Actually, Josh is, is here today. He's a prior military veteran, served in the Green Berets from, from the Army. So he's been helping me with, with more than his time's worth to help us find a site location. And finally, we did find this site. And, and I think part of the reason is that, you know, ZTA didn't want to sell. They were very clear about that, that they did not want to sell. They wanted to, you know, be back on campus. And even talking with the university officials, it was very clear to me in those conversations that ZTA had every intent to get back on campus until they were finally denied for that sixth time, or whatever it was, that, you know, really you can't come back on campus. So when that, you know, final decision was made by the university, they started looking. And it was, you know, very much a closed-door process because their reputation is also at stake here. They want to provide a smooth transition to something that, you know, shows them their last final hurrah in, in this area, if you will, that ZTA is a good organization, that stands up for the beliefs, their core beliefs of their, their organization, and they found a good match with us. And, and I think that we will certainly turn around what is a property in shambles and be able to, you know, revitalize it to something that they can continue to be proud of. And we would be more than honored to welcome their former residents back into that house. If there's annual events that we host, if there's speakers, of course, they're welcome. There's, there's history there, and that history is important, just much, as much as the history of the Marine Corps is important to us.
So as far as the funding goes, it sounds like you'll need some private donations for your, to the 501(c)(3)
Yes.
to do some part of it, and then you'll have this investor funding part for another, for the other part. So the way I understand the Fundrise works is they basically advance you the money, then they package that into investments for real estate, for people to invest in real estate with smaller amounts.
For improvement, yes.
So it sounds like you would be getting the private, the, the part that they need to return on from Fundrise. Would you also then use Fundrise for the donation part, the charitable contributions? Or would you use a different platform for that?
No, no, we would have our own payment systems, platform, et cetera. So for instance, you know, in raising the money to obtain the property, which is a prerequisite to go on and crowdfund any additional improvements to the property, that's where a Fundrise could come in. But if someone showed up, you know, after we had been able to acquire this property and they were willing to pay, you know, a million two or whatnot, that it would cost on top of the additional purchase price. And again, BLDD is still in the early stages of trying to figure out exactly what those costs are, total ballpark, just from developers that I've talked to that have been through that property. So, but if someone came to us with that, that funding, absolutely, we would take it. It's in the best interest of the community. The goal, the intent is to, to build, to, not build, but, you know, revitalize this structure to serve the intent of what we're aiming to do.
So then is it, are, is it these investors from Fundrise that wanted, that would advance you the money? Are they the ones that say we don't want anything to do with historic properties?
No, those are the investors that phase, that's phase two. So phase one are the investors that are willing to back us right now, the people that I've talked to. Even though Urbana has a great track record, which there's a lot to be proud of there, the, the biggest challenge for them is that they're not concerned with a city's track record. They're concerned with a track record across the board. And any sort of historic designation is hampering and detrimental to us to obtain the initial funding to secure this property. So that is the biggest challenge right now, is if the city proceeds with that, we have very little chance to acquire this.
Okay, that, that helps, I think, a little bit. I just, and then just one final question, just so we kind of cover ourselves, I guess, before we get into fundraising too much. Are you ever registered in Illinois to raise charitable contributions yet? Okay.
I, I don't know if that's a requirement for us because we're not actively hosting, you know, an event like in DC.
We just don't want to be raising funds for you illegally, so.
Right, yes, exactly, of course. Yes, if we hosted a fundraiser, you know, there are people in attendance, then yes, we would need to go and pursue that designation.
Okay, thanks.
Have you had this property appraised?
Uh, no, no, I have not.
Okay, did you have a question?
Thank you. I am less concerned about your fundraising because that's really not the concern of the council. The real concern here is getting clear what specifically is the concern of the designation.
Agreed.
What prevents you from moving forward if it's designated? And I just have not heard that.
Understood. So trying to avoid the specifics of fundraising, the designation itself boils back to investor confidence. So regardless of what source of funds we get, it, it boils down to the access and the availability that we have currently from what we have been able to, you know, come up with in order to obtain this property. Right now, I'm hearing no, is that if you get this designation, we will not give you the funds, which means that, you know, this house has been sitting empty for five or six years, and now we want to put a historic designation on it, then what? Then it's going to sit empty and now, great, we have a, a nice outside with a historic designation that nobody wants to buy. And so that, that certainly precludes us from making a good use of the property that with the residents that are going to be in it are going to be awesome for this community, for, you know, for everybody here to benefit. We will be out doing community service for sure, more than most on-campus organizations will ever contribute all year long.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Scott Dossett.
Hello again, everyone. Well, that one's kind of a hard one to follow. I'll just say right off of the, off of the mark. Partly because frankly, I think a lot of the conversation was off the mark. So if that puts me on the wrong side of you guys, I'll just go right out there. You know me, I've been here before. This is about historic preservation in Urbana, a local landmark, local history. I had two uncles that did grunt time, Forward Ranger in World War II. We can all smack down here if we want to. And with all due respect to the service branches mentioned, it's absolutely inconsequential to your decision. This effort appears to be in line with the last-minute stagger step filing from the current owner that we received at HPC. I study a case for three or four hours and walk around, I'm a member of the Historic Preservation Commission. I study a case, walk around a building, look around neighborhoods, put my time into trying to do good service work for my community. And I come in here and sit where Eric is, and there's a piece of paper laying on my desk that is this appeal letter from the owner. And we get into this process, and I look at Jeff, who's not here now, I like Jeff, Ingstrom, and I say, Jeff, why didn't we get this? Well, we just got this, is what he told me. So I'm just bringing to you, the fact of the matter is that the owners of this structure are trying to find every possible avenue to confuse and obfuscate what the obvious choice you have to make is. And yeah, I don't think I've ever been close to this mad as I talk to you guys. I'm, I'm sorry, I, I really am.
You have one minute.
I apologize. They don't know that there are two levels of administrative review prior to the certificate of appropriateness that's even needed, okay? So HPC doesn't always see every one of these. Libby does most of them. Bang, makes sense, go. No flow, no money, no nothing. They admit that they're going to leave the outside alone and rework the interior. Your Historic Preservation, Preservation Ordinance is meant to exactly deal to that case. That's why, do, is there a reason we have a Historic Preservation Ordinance or not? I mean, that's kind of a fundamental question here. Any code enforcement action is going to be perceived as a risk to investors. So what kind of threat do you have here?
I'll give this guy another minute.
Has Steve Cochran been into that building? Does he know what load-bearing structures may be, need to modify? Are the Semper Fi people going to roll over in six months and say, well, you know, that second floor, sorry, we're out of here? They don't have money anyway? Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Scott.
Happy New Year.
Okay, Alice Novak.
Hello, I have been Chair of the Urban Historic Preservation Commission for 15 years. Anniversary is this month, and I'm just here to answer any questions you might have. I've worked, as some of you know, in historic preservation for about 30 years. So I understand the programs can be confusing and such. So as you begin your conversation, if you have any questions, I'm in the back row, and I'll be happy to answer that. One of the things I did want to substantiate is the issue of certificate of appropriateness has come up with several people, and I'd like to give you the numbers on that. In our 15 years, we've had 55 applications for a certificate of appropriateness, and that's the permission to make a change, exterior change to the building. 29 of those have been issued administratively. And that means that I, as the Chair of the Commission, and Libby as the zoning administrator, review and say yes or no, and we said yes to all 29 of those requests. And those are usually for minor works, which is something that's a simple repair, in-kind replacement or something. The other 55 were reviewed by the entire commission, but the commission meets pretty regularly, every first Wednesday of the month. So there's not a horrific time period to wait to be heard before the commission. And in that time, in those 55 applications for a certificate of appropriateness, we've only had one denied, and that was for the full demolition of a house in the 800 block of West Main Street, a small historic district. And it was a contributing house. It was appealed to council, and you all validated our decision to deny that request. And then it was settled under the threat of a lawsuit.
Okay, thank you so much.
I have a question.
Oh, a question for you.
Hi.
Diane.
I toured the house today, which was an eye-opening experience. I had a question about the idea of the, is there in this particular property a contributing structure, which I assume would be the Royer original house? Is the addition considered non-contributing, or is it all one piece?
There's no way to separate it out. I mean, it is however many parcels that it is. The, the core structure is Royer 1928. There's a two-story west wing that was done by Berger &amp; Kelly, that was the successor firm to the original Berger &amp; Kelly. Berger &amp; Kelly had sons who took over the firm. That was done in 63. And then there was a sunroom that was done in the mid 80s, I think, that was put on part of the first floor of the Royer house, of the Royer core. I don't see that there's any way to separate it out because it all kind of blends together now.
Okay.
You know, if, it's feasible if somebody wanted to make changes to the building that they could apply for certificate of appropriateness for particular changes just to one portion of that, including possible removal of the sun porch or something like that.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Bill Brown?
Um, yeah, just kind of wanted to ask a question about our, our historic preservation requirements as com-
as compared to other cities. I don't know if you're familiar with other cities, but apparently investors are concerned because they've had bad experience with historic preservation maybe in other cities. I was looking at the, so not only is there the certificate of appropriateness, there's also exempt category, lists a lot of things where you can actually do things on the outside without doing anything, right? It's just, if it's exempt, it's exempt, and one of those is anything that's previously painted, you could paint it any color you want. So we don't care if you paint the window trim pink, or purple, or whatever. I imagine some cities might have that in their historic preservation, controlling colors and things like that. So just in general, have you had a chance to compare ours to other cities, and do you have any impression of whether ours is more strict, less strict?
I think ours is very comparable to other cities. We have what is referred to as a binding ordinance, which means that the review of the Historic Preservation Commission is, is a binding decision, not just a recommendation. There are over 100 preservation ordinances in the state of Illinois, and more than 70 of those are binding ordinances, in fact, I think at least 80, because the state of Illinois has 80 certified local governments now, and Urbana and Champaign are both CLGs. One of the things we did as a result of a proposed historic district early on, probably 2001, was we created those charts to make the ordinance more user-friendly, so people are copying us on our charts, because we realized that the review process wasn't distinguished between contributing and non-contributing buildings in historic districts, and that didn't make sense. If something doesn't contribute, it shouldn't have the same threshold for review as a contributing property. So, so we created the charts, we still find things that aren't clear on the charts, but it was a huge step in the right direction in making the document more user-friendly. And so I think we're at least comparable to what other communities are doing, if not a little bit more straightforward.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Thank you very much. Frank Butterfield.
Good evening, I'm Frank Butterfield, I'm the Director of the Springfield Office of Landmarks Illinois, or the statewide historic preservation nonprofit, and coming from Springfield in the snow, I think I should get 30 minutes, not three, but I'll take, I'll take three. And thankfully, a lot of the speakers earlier on covered what, a lot of what I had to say, you know, is this a landmark? Yes, it meets the criteria, it's a well-written nomination, you have a lot of expertise on your commission, you'd have to do a lot of academic gymnastics to say this isn't a landmark. So I'm not really going to even touch on that, more so on, same with your, your comprehensive plan, talks about landmarks over and over again, preservation, sense of place. It's refreshing to see how, how the community has made their will clear in that, in that document. But also, just a couple similar properties that I polled, one is a former fraternity house in Iowa City, and I can give this to you afterwards, it's the parish apartments. So this was a, a former fraternity house that a developer, Franz Holbar at the time, seeks out historic properties, and they, they took this and they converted it into apartments, because that's what they do, basically, they're, they're investors, they're developers that look for these types of projects. And similarly, I polled a fraternity house in Madison, Wisconsin, and this photo is tiny, but it shows a derelict little house, and a fraternity that had been absent for about 10 years, I believe, and decided they wanted to reoccupy it. So they decided to do it, and plans for renovation included new bathrooms, skylights, new heating equipment, air conditioning, and all approved by the Historic Preservation Commission, that building is a local landmark. And one of the quotes there was about the elevator, they're required to have an elevator tower, and the Landmarks Commission granted a certificate of appropriateness needed to build the elevator to the fraternity Monday night, when this article's written. So that building, if you go today, is, is a beautiful fraternity house that's been completely rehabbed. And just to talk about investors, you know, I do with a lot of projects.
You have one minute.
Across the state, nonprofits, I was at a groundbreaking for the Manny Jackson Center for Humanities in Edwardsville, it's a local landmark, it's a multimillion-dollar project, Lewis &amp; Clark Community College is using that for a center for the humanities, so there was, there was funds available there to have the nonprofit. And then from a for-profit standpoint, we deal with, like I mentioned, Franz Holbar, developers that are seeking out these types of projects. I was on the phone today with a developer from Indiana, who said, "Call me whenever you get a historic project, because I'm always keeping my eyes out for those." And not that I came really prepared to talk about veterans, but just it rung true to me, because in my previous job, the National Trust for Historic Preservation, I worked in Wisconsin, and if you get a chance, go to savingplaces.org and look at the Milwaukee Soldiers' Home. It's a national historic landmark, there's no tier higher than that as far as landmark designation, and that building wouldn't be standing today but for the veterans, it said how important place was to them. That, that Old Main, the Ward Theater, all of these buildings are there because the veterans said how important place was to them. So I can take any questions, but thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Any questions? Mike Madigan.
I do have one. Do you know why this property, even though it was originally listed as eligible for national recognition on the federal, help me out?
The National Register of Historic Preservation.
National Register.
Yeah.
Why it was not?
Why it wasn't listed?
Why it was not listed?
Well, unfortunately, the, the National Register isn't, let's say, an active program where you hire a ton of architects across the country, go out and find the best things and list them. It's actually, it boils up from the community. So IHPA, the Illinois Historic Preservation Agency, at some point obviously reviewed this and said, "Hey, that's eligible, but we don't have the, the staff to go list it". They're saying if somebody here, or if a consultant is hired, or we have people do it on their own all the time, were to put the information together, which you've basically already have a lot of that information done, and submitted it, that more than likely it would be listed on the National Register.
But that was a multiple property listing, so I'm just curious why many, many other fraternity and sorority houses were listed, and this one was not, I'm sorry, were designated from the list, and this was not. I just am curious as to the answer to that.
Yeah, that, I mean, it would go back to whoever put those individual nominations forward via that multiple resource document, it's, it's on them as opposed to IHPA or Landmarks Illinois, or anyone saying yes to these and no to these, it's more of an active effort. And I would encourage you to keep moving forward, in addition to this landmark designation, as well for the National Register, too.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm going to leave these with you as well.
Bernadine Stake.
I'm Bernadine Stake, and I'm happy to be here. I would like to show my support for the nomination of the Zeta Alpha House for the landmark stake. I think we're so lucky in Urbana to have such precious buildings, and we just should take care of them and appreciate them. And I think there are people here who are saying that they agree, that they like to have these older housing fixed up so that we can keep them, rather than tearing them down or doing some other crazy thing with them. So I, I'm very much hope that all of you will, will take care of that beautiful building and, and have the, what do we call it? Nomination, so that, so that we can all, all enjoy the beautiful buildings that we have in Urbana. Urbana has a lot of beautiful buildings, and we just want to keep all of them.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions for Bernadine? Thank you, Bernadine.
Thank you.
Linda Lorenz.
Linda Lorenz, I want to remind you that there are a great number of people here with expertise who have worked on, on our community preserving these old houses, in particular the Royer houses, on their own time, because this is so important to us that we do it. So that we have a district, we have pamphlets, we've, we have, you can walk around the community and see all these Royer houses, and this is a Royer house that needs to go on the list and on the map, and be with its brother and sister buildings, and, and, and see to it that we just keep an eye out for all these wonderful buildings, and the fact that we put in our own time is because we love it and we know how important it is, and as many people have said, it's just so nice to know that they're here, to walk by them, to see them, and to know we're taking care of them.
Thank you very much. I have some letters, 16 people have written in support of the Urbana Police Department, and these are people from American Legion Post 71, who support the hiring practices at the Urbana Police Department as they relate to the recruiting of military veterans. And I also have a letter from a lady who writes every year and does not want us to allow prizefighting in Urbana. So far, we have not. But anyway, she writes every year, so I'll give these to the clerk. Okay, is there anyone else on petitions and communications? Okay, we'll move on, we don't have any unfinished business that we're going to deal with. Reports of standing committees, I don't believe we have any of those, reports of special committees, reports of officers. I have the IT staff report, Sanford Hess.
Yes, first of all, this has been driving me crazy, too. There we go. Good evening, my name is Sanford Hess, I'm the IT Director at the City of Urbana. I have some slides, but I'm very willing to check them to the side and just answer questions. I submitted a written report, I boiled it down as quickly as I could to just a couple of key topics. So what I'd prefer to do is just go through them quickly, answer any questions that you might have, and then step aside. This came out of questions that were asked of me about a year ago when I interviewed. I've been on the job approximately a year now, so it took me some time to figure out what was going on, and then took me some other time to find the time to write this report, but that's what is in front of you now. So three quick topics, first of all, what does IT do? And second of all, how is IT funded? And then finally, we'll talk about three top objectives for the IT Division. So what do we do? Two answers to this question. First of all, IT is responsible for the city's technology infrastructure. So just like we have wiring and plumbing, these days, we have technology, and so whether that's the computers on our desks, or the network that connects them, the servers, and I'll pause there and note that we actually have one very special server, it is called the Power 7, and it is also known by its old name, which is the AS400. This is essentially a mini mainframe, it is a box that runs software, and which we can write software on, and it actually runs a number of our critical city systems on it. We also support the mobile technology, some of the departments have mobile phones, obviously, but also there's laptops in the squad cars, the fire trucks have laptops. We are moving forward with issuing some mobile devices to some of our inspectors, we hope. So more and more, we'll be seeing these mobile devices part of the city's infrastructure. The phone system in the buildings, and lastly, the printers, and my note there, IT is responsible for the printers themselves, we don't deal with the ink, we actually have a contract, the local vendor for that, and the copy machines are also outsourced. Answer number two, so in addition to the sort of hardware infrastructure, IT is responsible for business systems. And the definition I'm using here of a business system is one of the software programs the departments use to do their business. So we support them. So for example, finance has the financial and payroll systems, fire and rescue uses a software called Firehouse, the police use ARMS, community development is using a permit system called PT-WIN, Public Works has systems in both the fleet and arbor divisions, and a number of the departments make use of the geographic information system, or GIS. And just as a note there, we participate in the county's GIS consortium. The consortium is a very great example of inter, you know, intergovernmental cooperation. We maintain our part of the database, we share that information with everybody else in Champaign County, we have full use of all the GIS data. Okay? Any questions so far? All right, how is IT funded? And also, what revenue do we generate? This slide shows our budget, specifically in the general fund. The IT Division is part of the executive department, and I'll just note that that's a recent change, starting on July 1st of this past 2014. So we just moved from finance to the executive department. Four main budget lines, as you can see, personnel dominates. The contractual spend, out of that $42,000, actually more than 80% of that is internal transfers to other city funds, so things like insurance and telephone costs are actually most of the contractual. Bottom line, the City of Urbana does things ourselves, we do not use a lot of third-party contracts, and that's just the way that historically the IT Division has operated, and it's worked out actually very well. From the capital perspective, by the way, most of that money is actually for the vehicles that we share with finance. We do use the cars and the trucks to move computers back and forth through buildings. To get a very accurate picture of IT spending, I'm going to add in below that something called computerization. So let me explain for a second. There are many computer costs that the city incurs that are not specific to one department, and so whether that's things like Windows software, or Microsoft Office, or whether it's the actual laptops or desktops, we buy them out of a common pool of money called computerization, and that is then allocated or split to the departments. And so every department winds up paying a share of that. If you add all those bits up together, it's $250,000. To get the actual IT-specific spend, you would then add that to our total, slip out the IT share of computerization, and our net spend is $880,000. So that's what the city spends. Why do we care about that number? The next slide actually shows us how we are compared to our peers, and I found this very enlightening. We compared ourselves to some similarly sized Midwestern cities. And as you'll notice, this one is a meaningful comparison of the IT budget as a percentage of the overall general fund. We are pretty much in the middle, and in fact, are on the lower side of spend on IT as a percentage of the general fund. Coincidentally, we're identical to University City, Missouri, but if you've noticed, the next row is below that, you can see different methods of IT. We spend a large percent of our money on payroll, a very small percent on contractual services. University City spends zero on payroll, and a lot more on third-party services. So they have effectively outsourced their IT department. And as you can see, other cities kind of come in more or less in the same range. So there's a spectrum. There's a spectrum, and I'm not saying that any one is better or worse, certainly, it's a lot dependent on what you're trying to achieve, but that's where we stand against our peers. Any questions on these numbers? Revenue, so the IT Department also generates revenue. For about, almost 25 years now, we have had a intergovernmental agreement where we're providing financial and payroll system services to the library, to the Park District, and to the Cunningham Township. We also, for about 10 years, have been supporting the Park District with additional IT support, just helping them get their computers set up and monitored. So bottom line, lowest one on the page, 2015, we were billing about $60,000 in the current fiscal year. So we actually bill back about 9% of what we spent. Diane.
Are you covering your costs with that?
No.
What are the true costs?
The true costs of IT?
No, the true costs of providing these services.
You know, honestly, we don't have a very good metric for breaking those out, because, for example, we don't ask people to track in their time if they're doing tasks for the Park District or tasks for somebody else. We just, it's, those are things that are done by the staff in general, and they just balance their time among all the responsibilities.
So where did these, how did you come up with these charges to these different entities?
Excellent question. Those amounts were stated in the original contracts that dated back 25 years ago, and have increased over time, more or less at about a 3% increase. back 25 years ago, and have increased over time, more or less at about a 3% increase. We don't have any documentation on past increases, so all we can do is report what the numbers were.
Is there a plan to actually determine what costs are, or are you just going to continue with this practice?
In the short term, we're going to continue with the same practice. One of the reasons, again, would be, it would be a lot of record-keeping to track what our actual costs are for those things. We are talking about redoing our agreements with those different entities. So that might come up. But honestly, it ain't broke, so we may not be fixing it.
Fair enough. Just wondering.
I agree. I agree. Mr. Jacobson?
Well, yeah, I, I, it's not broke, but it pinches. The, in other words, you know, we have a very tight budget. And, and I, you know, I'm all for helping the Park District, and I'm all for helping, you know, these, these other entities, but, but it, but I don't think we should, I don't think we should sac, I, I think we should make, I think we should, I think we should contribute services, but not sacrifice the, the, the revenue. Because, for example, the township is actually doing, has more slack in their budget than the city does. I, and so, now, I don't, I don't want to gouge them, but I think some, some attempt to figure out what's a reasonable fraction, I really think would be, would be in order.
I do agree. And one of the things I've encouraged, because there have been questions, for example, also from the Park District about what they're getting for their costs, we have encouraged them to talk to their peers and find out what their costs are. Because one of the easiest things for them to do is look at their peers and say, "Well, what are you paying?" And find out from there what's a fair price. So. Again, I spent a lot of this past year just sort of learning these things myself. So we didn't want to make too many changes right off the bat without having some grounding of why we're doing what we're doing. Okay, three top objectives for IT moving forward. Number one is the continuity, and I'll emphasize improvement, of the business systems. We don't just want to stay where we are. We do want to improve operations. The Power Seven systems that I mentioned, these are some of the most critical systems in the city. So one of our major concerns is just continuity there. But we do want to make changes. There are changes all the time. For example, the most recent contracts, for example, with the firefighters, had changes to the payroll system that we have to make. So there's an ongoing update process to these systems, as well as making sure that they're there and operational. One of the things that we're going to be doing in some action items is find out if hiring an intern as a programmer is going to be viable or not. We want to free up some of our more experienced programmers who have a very long queue of tasks to get to. And to be honest, it's not easy these days to hire people who walk in the door with this Power Seven knowledge. So what we're going to be trying out is hiring an intern and seeing if they can learn it. And one of the benefits of the intern is that if they can't learn it, then maybe we'll learn something for next time about other interns, or at least develop a knowledge base of what it takes to bring somebody on to learn these systems. But we do need to have the ability to support these systems moving forward. The other ongoing action item here is just the constant triaging or prioritization of tasks. As problems crop up, we deal with them. We're always juggling our list of priorities and doing the best we can with all the many departments that we have to service. Objective number two is to protect the city's data, as well as the computer infrastructure. So I would call this one cybersecurity. Basically, we need to make sure that we're doing everything we can to protect the city. But to be honest, 2014 has been a very informative year about problems with cybersecurity. We operate from the assumption that problems will happen. So our question is, what can we do to limit the damage and make sure that we can recover quickly? So some action items we'll be doing here. First of all, disaster recovery. We have backups and processes for, for, you know, for taking the information and making sure we have copies off-site. But we don't really have a battle plan for what would happen if there was a problem. So we need to sit down and write some instructions to ourselves, so that when it happens, we're ready. We're going to review our network policies. Our network policies are actually very strong and emphasize security, in some cases, to the point of actually causing some frustration for our users. So we do plan to continue to review what we're doing, make sure we're finding the right balance. The other part of that is the next item. We'll be training the users in some safe computing, as well as best practices. And finally, potentially doing some hardware upgrades. There are better tools out there. We're not going to be throwing money at the problem, but with some wise spending, we can get some good protection as well. And finally, number three, I think this is a very important objective, is to make sure that the city as a whole is effectively using our money on technology. Something that's, you know, sort of missed sometime to me in the discussion of buying technology is that usually, technology that we buy is not replacing other expenditures. These are new expenditures that are just adding on top of what's already being spent. So it's important to make sure that we're buying carefully, determining things that we really need, making sure we're going about procurement in the right process, not just lowest price, but also other criteria as well, and making good decisions in terms of what the city buys. So for example, we are already in the process of assisting two of the departments with current technology procurements. We hope to come out of this with some standard procurement templates for technology that would have some of our technology standards built into them, so we're not redoing it each time. Another part of this is providing the departments with clear information about what the technology costs. So part of this is giving them specific information so that they know what is it costing, and not just in the purchase, but in the maintenance in the long term. And finally, something that has been going on, I mentioned the GIS database earlier, collaboration with other local governments is a really great way for us to make sure our dollars go a long way. We work all the time with the other agencies in the area, and it's been a very good working relationship, and I think it will continue to be, and we'll continue to work closely with the other entities. Okay? That's what I have. Any other questions?
Um, Dennis?
Maybe it's been two years now that the city had a significant redesign of the webpage. The webpage is certainly more functional and more useful, and certainly more handsome. I guess I'd like to know how it's worked, and the one issue that has come up sometimes for myself is the, having success looking up past ordinance and documents by word searching, and the difficulty of landing into the area that I expected to find. So I have trouble with the word search and, you know, throughout past documents. I know it's a gigantic field going back years and years, and there's thousands of ordinances. What's the progress on making that function more useful? And has much, has it changed much even though the webpage has changed, or is that something that was going to require outsourcing, maybe, or, I don't know, an intern to help resolve?
Let me take the two different parts, the ordinances and resolutions. We did work with Councilman Brown and Councilman Smythe earlier in the year to introduce a searchable version of that. So we actually had to build our own, the Urbana Way. And we built a search, there is a word search of them. It does depend on the documents being scanned properly to make sure that they are recognizing the individual words as words, and not just as a picture. But within that, it does work very well. So, you know, as needed, we can apply that kind of a search skill to it. More generally, searching the website, it's a challenge, and it's been raised to our attention in a number of different ways. The best thing that can happen there is for people who create the pages to assign appropriate keywords, and that's an education as much as anything else. So it's just making sure that people are associating their pages with the right words, so that when people search, they find it. More generally, the website, you know, like you said, it's only just a couple of years old. It, it works. We use Drupal, which is an open-source platform, which has low cost, but also has limitations. And so some of the frustrations that we've had in terms of what we want to do with the site have partly been due to the architecture that we started on. But at the same time, I talked to people when I showed up, and I didn't get any strong feelings that there's a need for us to change the website at this point. So I think small improvements will continue to be the order of the day.
Diane?
Yeah, I think you got other things more important to focus on. So thank you for your very clear report. It was just excellent. So what I got from it is that we, the city overall, seems to be pretty dependent on custom software written in-house for Urbana, and in, a server that's based here, a few people, namely the seven people working in IT who know how it all works and how to use it, and then, and they're using a programming language that fewer and fewer people know how to use. So in the short term, it all works fine, but in the long term, this sounds like kind of a risky way to operate. So what do you see us doing to position ourselves 10 years from now, or even five years from now? I mean, I was, it was kind of...
Scary?
Yeah. Yeah, that would be the word. So what do you see us doing?
Two things. One is making sure that we have continuity plans in place in the short term, so that we can support our systems for the next couple of years. And then the second part of that is planning their, their upgrades or replacements.
Is this server going to last, how much longer will our...
Yes, yes. The server's actually relatively new.
Okay.
And the server is, is fine. It is, it is in great shape. And we have a spare. We have actually a duplicate version of the same hardware box.
Okay.
So from that perspective, I'm not concerned. I'm more concerned about our knowledge of our systems. So it is, and it will happen gradually, but, you know, to be honest, and this is actually the world of software that I come from, these types of big systems are expensive. And so, you know, there will be system replacements on the horizon that will have to be constrained by our ability to pay for them in the next couple of years. But it will be something that we'll be gradually doing over, like you said, probably a five-to-10-year window.
And you're developing a plan for that?
We are. I mean, we're working with some of the departments focusing on different business systems.
Okay.
Charlie?
Yeah, I'd echo Diane's comments, and I think on page five, I underlined a particular area, which is this continuity issue, which is just having one person that can do a big portion of the tasks. And it seems like you're, you've got, at the moment, a low-cost start to a solution, which is to make sure you have two people that can do every job down there.
Right.
Which is probably the, you know, you want to have at least two people that can do every core, core issue, and that's where you're headed with this, the way I take it. But it ultimately comes down to, A, being able to train somebody, and then having the money to pay them appropriately on acquiring that training. So to follow up on that, I know you had to basically bring in a new ARMS programmer who didn't know the language, but did, what was the, did that person go out and learn the language, and how has that all worked?
Actually, in that case, we were very fortunate. Our ARMS programmer who we hired did know the language, because the shop that he used to work on got rid of this type of architecture, and so his, his skills were available. So we were very lucky about that. But at the same time, I don't think that'll be the case for too many more hires moving forward. So he came on, he was able to, you know, without getting into the nuances of software, when you're getting into somebody else's software, it's almost like creative writing. So you are, you're reading what they wrote and figuring out what they were doing and why they were doing it. And so he learned ARMS from within and has been able to make a lot of great changes over the past couple of months. He's worked out wonderfully, actually. So we're very fortunate with that.
So does he serve as a sort of backup to Carla?
In the interim, yes. He is our sort of backup to Carla. He does not know the business systems that she works on, but in a pinch, he'd be able to step in, look at the software, and figure out, from reading the code, which Carla does a wonderful job writing code, documenting and everything else.
Okay.
Would be able to figure out what's going on.
So there's good comment, commenting of code now. Okay.
Right.
That's really important. Okay. And so, of course, you know, there are going to be retirements and changes and all that. So I wish you luck, and I, I think you've laid out a, a plan here that will have costs in the next budget or two that we will have to address. And I think that is the single, you know, over the next five years, while we have that system, need to be addressed. And then, of course, you know, post-five years, whatever, that's, that could be even more expensive if we, if we don't come up with an in-house solution. I mean, are there in-house solutions that could take the place of this, but might be built on more current techno, or more current programming and technology and all that?
It's absolutely possible. Yes.
Okay. Eric?
We had, I guess I have two questions. One is, we had talked earlier about the issue of moving towards one-stop shopping for people who want to find their way through, you know, Urbana, city regulations and ordinances, and so that, is, do you foresee that you're going to be, you've got, you're putting a lot of patches on, on systems, but do you, do you see that it's going to be possible over time to move towards that, that as you, as you upgrade systems, you can make them, you know, different departments, talk, systems talk to each other better?
It's always a goal. I mean, I can't promise, as I think I mentioned before, data in Urbana would be having it all in one place and one screen.
Right.
I'm not sure we can get there, but we can certainly bring things together. The website's a powerful tool for that, because really, it doesn't matter that there's four systems in the background. If somebody's interacting with the website, and they're trying to get a building permit, and they want to, you know, request some other information, dealing with one form should be fine for the person who's working with it, even if on our side, it's multiple systems. So...
I guess I have, I have a second question. I often find with your website and with many websites, that rather than search, use the website search engine, I just let Google search, you know, dive into the website.
Sure.
Do you, now, one of the things that some websites do is they actually incorporate the Google search engine into the local search engine. And I wonder if that's part of your strategy, or, you know, what do you think about that?
Well, again, these are some of the limitations of using Drupal as the website architecture, so it already comes with a search, and that's the one we use. But you're right, people can use Google and just search us the same way. So I don't think we'll be switching over the search, because I think it's more built in to the website that we already use.
But, but...
But people can do that.
Well, also, you could have an alternative slot where you could do a Drupal search or a Google search right on the Urbana webpage, and people could, you know, see which one of them got them where they needed to go quicker.
Okay.
But then I have one other question. I'm sorry to take so much time. But there's, it's kind of in the air that, that at some point, somebody's going to propose, and we might even do body cams for police officers, which would be a big, you know, a big new data stream for you to deal with.
Right.
Do you have any thoughts right now on the, on, on whether that can be done, you know, whether that can be handled within your current budget, whether there's going to have to be more money expended for that, or, or, yeah, I just, I just don't know if you have any preliminary thoughts about that?
The preliminary thought would be that it's all about storage. So part of that depends on how long you have to store the videos on. It depends on if the videos are high-def or low-def, because that massively changes the amount of space they take up. Champaign is, so this is a good example of intergovernmental cooperation. Champaign is actually going through this right now, because they're implementing high-def video, and so that's a lot of storage requirements. So they, for example, are interested in doing a multi-jurisdiction data storage center. And, you know, those are things that we could make use of. In the very short term, we have enough storage capacity ourselves to deal with it. But at some point, if it became overloading, it would just be a matter of moving some of that data to a different site.
Bill Brown?
Yeah, I just have a question about, that was a very good report. I enjoyed it. And I noticed one part about open data, and I think that, is that a state... And I noticed one part about open data, and I think that, is that a state-run platform? Is there, are there data standards for that? And besides financial data, would there be other data we could put on there? And would it save us money on FOIA requests?
Great questions. Uh, in short answer, yes, we are hoping to do some open data information very soon, so stay tuned for that. It would not just be financial data, but obviously, financial data would be out there. That would be a, but we're hoping to put multiple kinds of information out there. It would be not necessarily as part of the state's site, although the state does have a site. We would actually just be an Urbana branded site. And we do hope that it would reduce the number of FOIAs. The state legislature just changed the rules very recently, in the past two months, that permit us now to answer a FOIA request that if the information is on the website, we can just sort of direct people to where it is on the website. So that would hopefully reduce some of the FOIAs that we have to respond to.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any other reports of officers? Libby Tyler, Community Development.
Happy New Year. Brandon Boys has submitted an economic development report, and I just have a few things to highlight there. We'll soon be issuing a request for proposals for the property to the north of the city building. You may have seen in the newspaper, a nice feature on the Great Impasta, which sadly closed its doors after many years in, in both Champagne and then in Urbana. Terms of new construction, you'll be seeing the new building shell at Gateway Shops, the final stage of that development at University in Cunningham. Work continues on the Campus Circle apartment complex on University. And renovations, the new catering kitchen for Hendrick House continues on Colerney Street. And there's renovations underway for the relocation of the Urbana True Tires, which sits on the block north, subject of the RFP. Couple of big submittals. The bid to the IHSA for the State Boys Basketball Championship to come here to Champagne-Urbana has been submitted ahead of schedule, and a nice piece on that as well. And a, a great, um, great submittal on behalf of the city for the Urbana Enterprise Zone. A lot of work went into that, and it's a, quite a, quite a document. So we, we certainly hope that it's a document that we'll be able to have Enterprise Zone approved for us. For your calendar, January 21st, on Wednesday, from 3:00 to 6:00 PM, we'll be having our first annual Market at the Square Community Supported Agriculture Fair, CSA Fair. Got a lot of participants already, and if you're interested in this topic, please come by. That will be at the Civic Center, again, January 21st, from 3:00 to 6:00 PM. On the website, you will see that there are surveys now about the Carbanas Pilot Program, and we'll be bringing a report to the council early in February. Also wanted to point out, on the UBA report, they had a very successful holiday market season. They had a record high number of vendors participating at 110, and a much, much higher attendance. So that's, that's been a great event for the UBA and for people shopping for the holidays. So this time of year, beginning of the year, we all begin to, I know you all are beginning to think about the annual cycle of the Annual Action Plan for HUD. And this year, not only are we going to be doing our 2015-16 Annual Action Plan, we also will be doing a consolidated plan, which is a treat that we do every five years for HUD for our grants programs, and this will be our 15 to 19 consolidated plan. So we are posting a series of public hearings coming up very soon. January 12th, these are neighborhood meetings primarily at Prairie School, 7:00 PM. January 13th, right here in the City Council Chambers, at 7:00 PM. January 14th, at Crystalview Townhomes, again, at 7:00 PM. And January 15th, we'll have a special hearing for, to receive input on housing and community development needs from nonprofits. That will be at the Civic Center at 10:00 AM. And then that evening, we'll be having another neighborhood meeting, and I believe that's at Hamilton on the Park, that location. And these are all posted on the website. Any questions on these reports?
So, I, um, I was at the Great Impasta on New Year's Eve. That's where I spent New Year's Eve and seeing Harold off into retirement, and it was really a beautiful, bittersweet evening. But I just wanted to assure the Liquor Commissioner of two things. One is that no alcohol was sold after midnight, and also that the, that Harold does not intend to use his personnel, his popularity as a springboard to the Illinois Senate.
Okay. That's, that's nice to know. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much, Libby. Are there any other reports of officers? Okay, let's get on to new business ordinance number 2015-01-001. That means it's the first ordinance of the year. An ordinance designating a historic landmark at 1404 South Lincoln Avenue, the Zeta Tau Alpha Sorority House. And this is Historic Preservation Case Number HP 2014-L-01. And we have Kevin Garcia here to explain this.
Good evening. So, I think we've, we've heard about this case quite a bit tonight, so I will, I will try and keep my report brief, but, but touch all the key points still. So as you're all aware, this is an application to designate the house at 1404 South Lincoln Avenue as a local historic landmark. Zeta Tau Alpha Fraternity is the property owner, and they have filed a valid protest against the application. The Historic Preservation Commission held a public hearing on this case on December 3rd, and recommended by a vote of six to zero with one abstention, they recommended approval of the application to the City Council. Now, since the property owner has filed a valid protest, the, the application could be approved by a minimum two-thirds vote of the alderperson's holding office. I'm gonna skip over the, the background discussion maybe, and just get straight on to the discussion of the criteria, if that's all right with everyone? Okay. So for, for local landmark...
There's a question right here from Carol Ammons.
I, I think the background and the reasoning is exactly the same as the December 4th meeting, is that correct? Last year's meeting, a year ago.
It's, it's very close.
So, I just want to ask, has the owner submitted, since that hearing, and since his presentation before this same council, did they submit any repairs to that building from the time they said that they wanted to keep it and maintain it to the new application and a new objection?
Um, not that I'm aware of. Are you talking about just building permits or things?
Right. Uh, we talked about the roof, we talked about helping them make sure they can get the repairs done, to, they wanted to save the building, they were very much interested in doing that, which was one of my reasons for not designating at that point, is that the owners committed to repairing the building, of which we've not received any repairs since the last hearing, based on the same presentation that you're about to do now.
Um, Libby, do you know, have they, I mean, we don't have, okay...
Any repairs, anything on this property?
We continue to monitor the property as a vacant property, and in our inspections, if we see a problem, we ask that it be repaired by the caretakers, and they have responded to that, but they have not pulled any permits for improvements to the property or major repairs. It's just a matter of continuing to ensure that it's secured, and any major problems have, will have been addressed. And, you know, lawn mowed and just the, the basic maintenance has been occurring.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. So for all of our landmark applications, we evaluate them based on, we have seven criteria that we use. The applicant claims that this property meets four of those seven criteria, so I'll just go through those now briefly. Okay, so criteria, the first criteria is that the property has, or the building has significant value as part of the architectural, artistic, civic, cultural, economic, educational, ethnic, political, or social heritage of the nation, state, or community. And we feel that the Zeta Tau Alpha Sorority House does meet this criteria. The building was designed to house the ZTA sorority in 1928. The sorority occupied the building from 1928 until the early 90s, when they left the U of Greek letter societies have had, had a big impact on the University of Illinois, at Urbana-Champaign, and on the community at large. UIUC has the highest membership in Greek letter societies of any college in the nation. That was true when this house was built, and that's true today. And as we heard earlier, there are several buildings. There are actually now 16 fraternity and sorority houses in Urbana and Champagne that are on the National Register of Historic Places, after the initial six in 1989, 10, 10 have been added since then. And while the ZTA house is not on the National Register, we feel that it would qualify for So the Historic Preservation Commission recommends a finding that the ZTA Sorority House has significant value to the cultural and civic history of the U of I campus area, and as a unique Greek letter house in an especially visible area. On to Criteria B, the property does not qualify under that criteria. Criteria C is that property is representative of the distinguishing characteristics of an architectural type inherently valuable for the study of a period, style, craftsmanship, method of construction, or use of indigenous materials, and which retains a high degree of integrity. We, we feel that this house is, is an excellent example of the French eclectic architectural style. If you look at Exhibits D and E in the memo that we, that staff sent out, you can, you can find a couple of different definitions. And I just wanted to show some quick pictures of the house and, and show some of those qualities of French eclectic style that, that the house exhibits. So the house has a steeply pitched, hipped roof, uses decorative brick, has stucco wall clad, wall cladding, coins at the corners, uses casement windows, has this porch and, and, or sorry, this wrought iron balustrade. Over the front entrance has this prominent conical tower, which if you look in Exhibit E, this, this looks really like a textbook example of, of the towered subtype of the French eclectic style. In terms of integrity, looking at, and now this picture, the, the original house, so here, I'll just go from the left. So this left part of the house is the 1963 edition. This middle part is the 1928 original house, and then there's a little sunroom that was tacked on in the 1980s down here. If you look at the 1928 house, I tried to find parts of it that would be considered not original, or at least in, in keeping with the original materials. I mean, you can't really tell if the stucco or the, the roofing is, is necessarily original, although it looks like it could be. But the only thing that looks unoriginal would be the, the downspouts and the gutters. Everything else on here looks to be original. You've got all the original windows, you even have the, you even have the original weathervein up top. So the main house exhibits a high degree of integrity. Now, there, there are some questions sometimes as to when, when houses have additions on them, whether they are historically appropriate and whether they detract from the integrity of the house. As long as they're done in a complimentary manner, the, the additions do not detract from the integrity of the house. This is the, looking from the southeast corner, you see in the front, you see that 1980s sunroom addition, and it really, it matches the original in terms of the types of window, the window style, the, the use of the brick. It's very complimentary in style. Same goes for the, for the Western 1963 edition. Again, you see, you see the decorative brick, you see the stucco, you see the roof, the roof line, and, and this decoration mirrored on that side. So in terms of integrity, the property exhibits a high degree of integrity. So we've, the Historic Preservation Commission and staff feel that Zeta Tau Alpha Sorority House is an inherently valuable and superior local example of the French eclectic architectural style with high integrity. Criteria D is that the house is a notable work of a master builder, designer, architect, or artist whose individual genius has influenced an area. It's undeniable that the house was designed by the firm of Royer, Danley, and Smith Architects from Urbana. Joseph Royer was the, was the, was one of the principals of that firm. There was some question raised last year as to whether Mr. Smith of Royer and Danley, or Danley, designed the house due to an article in the Daily Illini back in 1928. Aside from that article, there's, there's no other indication that Hubert Smith designed the house, but there's also nothing that says that Joseph Royer himself designed the house. I think the debate that we had at the Historic Preservation Commission dealt with the intent of the, the zoning ordinance and the language of the zoning ordinance. In particular, the zoning ordinance states that the work is notable work of a master builder, designer, architect, or artist whose individual genius has influenced an area. The, one reading of, of that is, is looking at it in terms of it's the sole work of a master builder, architect, et cetera. Another reading is that it could be their work in collaboration with other professionals. And in architecture, you find collaboration. Architecture isn't, is an inherently collaborative profession. So you'll often find blueprints that just have the name of a firm, and they don't say this was designed by one individual person. Given that, city staff and the Historic Preservation Commission believe that the intent of the, the zoning ordinance is to be inclusive of collaborative efforts. In this case, the blueprints say it was built, or it was designed by Royer, Danley, and Smith. And Joseph Royer, what, who was a master architect as, and one of the partners of that firm, had a hand in designing the house. Therefore, the Historic Preservation Commission recommends a finding that the Zeta Tau Alpha House is a notable work of architect Joseph Royer. Next criteria is that is it, that the building is identifiable as an established and familiar visual feature in the community owing to its unique location or physical characteristics. The physical characteristics of the main facade are, are dramatic and unique if you walk by, if you drive by. They're, they're important. Given the unique physical characteristics, we find the house is certainly identifiable as an established and familiar feature in the community. In terms of a unique location, the house is located on Lincoln Avenue, which serves as the eastern entrance to the University of Illinois campus. And as, as some folks pointed out earlier, it also serves as the southern end of, of Lincoln Avenue where the fraternity and sorority houses start. And it can be considered identifiable based on a unique location. So the Historic Preservation Commission finds that ZTA house meets this criteria. Last two criteria do not pertain to this case. So the recommendation is, based on the application and findings presented herein, the Historic Preservation Commission and staff recommend that City Council approve the proposed landmark designation for the Zeta Tau Alpha Sorority House. I can take any questions if you have them now. Thank you.
Dennis Roberts?
Uh, one question that's come up in our discussion this, this evening was concern about the possibly adding, say, an elevator shaft, if, if, if perchance, the individuals who've, who've come forward tonight even, even end up purchasing the building, and if they were to install an elevator shaft and were to put it on the back of the building. Is it true that the ordinance is especially, specifies that changes to the front of the building, or to the, any, any part of the building that would be in the view of, from the sidewalk, or the public, the public passage area of... or the public passage area of the city are to be under scrutiny, but that there is more wiggle room, you could say, or less stricture for any element that might be added on that is not in view from the sidewalk or, say, the street?
So that's a good question. And the way that our ordinance reads, as far as I can tell, is that any exterior changes would require a certificate of appropriateness. Now, in practice, and the intent of most historic preservation regulations is that whatever is visible from the public right-of-way should be maintained as accurately, as historically accurate as possible. So I think in that case, a certificate of appropriateness would need to be applied for as an exterior change to the building, but I don't see why, I don't see, I can't speak for the Preservation Commission, but I don't see why they would not grant that certificate of appropriateness if it's out of view of the public right-of-way.
And in a similar manner, okay, let me think if I can get this. Any change that might be made to the building, which however might be easily removable, can be allowed. Is that correct? In other words, when one of the things that came up was like the gutters are, you know, are not appropriate to the time of the building, but they're on the building now. And my understanding is that there can be some additions to the building, like it might even be like a television satellite dish or something like that. If they can be removed easily and not, they don't harm the structure or the integrity of the building in the long run, that HBC has also allowed those. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. And actually, if you look at one of the, if you look here, the, these are not historically accurate satellite dishes. But yes, that's, that's correct. And we could ask Alice Novak for more on that if we need to, but I think that's correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. We have two people that wanted, did somebody else want to ask a question? We have two people that wanted to testify at the time that this is on the agenda. Christopher Wilcock, and then Robert Nemeth. You each have, well, I don't have a card for that person. So would you please do it in three minutes? Thank you.
My name is Chris Wilcock, and I live at 710 West Michigan Avenue in historic West Urbana. We here in Urbana have a historic landmark ordinance for several very good and reasonably well-thought-out objectives. We live and work in neighborhoods that we choose to describe as historic. Historic West Urbana and Historic East Urbana are just two of these neighborhoods that the community has agreed have unique character and that are worthy of preserving. For a second time in just over a year, this council has presented what I would characterize as an extremely strong case for landmark designation for the Zeta Tau Alpha Sorority House on Vermont Avenue. Over a year ago, the current owners argued that landmark status was not warranted because they already had plans to recolonize the Urbana chapter and reopen the house. They professed reverence for the building and assured this body that their soon-to-be undertaken renovation of the property would be true to the architecture and the historic nature of the building. Over a year later, there is absolutely no evidence of the imminent or even eventual return of ZTA as residence on Vermont Avenue. Now the property owners come before the council and ask you again to deny the landmark status not because the structure doesn't merit such status, but because they believe that the designation will interfere with their ability to sell the property to the highest bidder. It is clear to me, now that the owners' intentions to dispose of the property are known, our community, acting through its elected officials, must clearly state, this building is historic and is worthy of preservation because we value our history and all our built environment, for that is what makes the unique neighborhoods of Urbana historic. We have a landmark ordinance for good reasons. Now we need elected officials who aren't afraid to use it to protect what makes Urbana a special place. Thank you.
You have one minute. You did it in two minutes, so thank you. Anyone have a question? Well, thank you very much. Robert Nemeth.
Can I pass something out for the, for the, for the council?
Sure.
Hello, my name's Robert Nemeth. I'm the one that submitted the nomination this year. I am definitely not as eloquent to some of the other folks that have spoken before me. I, the ZTA house, I'll try to keep this brief because they've said everything that I pretty much wanted to say. The ZTA house is a charming, unique, and remarkably intact example of French eclectic architecture. It's a structure that is, such as this, provide appeal and a character to not only the immediate neighborhood, but the entire community. Historic preservation preserves the historic architecture, architectural aesthetic character, uniqueness, and heritage of our community, and helps to provide a sense of place and continuity. So there's a lot of support for this nomination. Twice it's gone before the Historic Preservation Council, Commission, excuse me. Recognizing and honoring what our ancestors have designed and built demonstrates our respect for these creations and provides an important link to our past. That's really important. These connections to our past help define who we are, where we came from, and what we value. Historic preservation adds value to our urban environment. It defines some communities, makes them special, we should do no less. Kevin outlined the criteria very well. To qualify for historic preservation status, you, there's seven criteria, you only have to qualify for one of those. This actually qualifies for four of those criteria. I provided, I sent you guys a document this afternoon that I provided to the Historic Preservation Commission. It tried to debunk all the objections that were provided in the objection from the ZTA. I'm not going to go over that here. I'll let the, that pass the Historic Preservation Commission unanimously, I'll let that stand for itself.
You have one minute.
Okay. So these decisions you make are very important for the fabric of our community. There are, ZTA actually has other historic properties. In this document that I gave you, on their own website, they talk about glowingly about one they have in Austin, Texas, and another one in Rustville, Arkansas. So it's kind of odd that they don't want to see this nominated as a historic property because they own some other historic properties. I think the economic benefits, as you, Mr. Jackson, mentioned, I've also done my homework. Historic preservation adds value to properties, it does not diminish the value of properties. It impacts, this ordinance impacts exterior only, not the interior. The ease of the COA is, certificate of appropriateness was well discussed by Alice Novak. And I think the owner should take pride in this being a property, a historic property. I guess my time is up, huh?
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Nemeth?
Do you need another minute?
No, really, I just, I hope it passes this time. Hopefully it doesn't come down to a third time is a charm or something like that. We, you know, it's a beautiful building. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, we have two people that want to testify. Josh Markowitz, and then Jenny Park. So you have three minutes.
Thank you. My name's Josh Markavich, I'm with Coldwell Banker Commercial, Devonshire Realty, and our firm was engaged by Semperify House to work with them to locate a property in Champagne, Urbana, to, you know, meet their goals and objectives with what they're trying to accomplish. And what I will briefly say is, I think, I forget which one of you asked the question before, is how would a historic preservation ordinance affect either doing what they're trying to accomplish or really any other potential buyer or user of this property? And to echo what Prescott said, is the 20% tax credit that was mentioned before would not benefit them due to them being a nonprofit. And it also, if you read it, there are four provisions that have to be met in order to get that. The first one being it has to be owner-occupied. So I'd ask you to think of a use for that that would be owner-occupied to get that credit. I don't foresee someone purchasing that and moving in with their family. That's, it's not that type of house. The second part is really the unknowns. There are unknown costs with, even if the intent is not to change the exterior, there are unknowns with, we don't know how bad the roof is, there's, the property is, I mean, it's been, if you've toured it, I don't know who has, but if you've gone into the basement, the first time I went in there, the amount of mold that was in there, you could almost pick it up with your hands. I would liken it to cotton candy except mold because there had been such severe leaks. I would attribute that to most likely the roof and the windows, which would probably all have to be replaced.
You have one minute.
Although, you know, there's, in the past, there's been trees growing out of the chimney in the building, so who knows what the result of that was. You can see, if you go on Google Street View, you can see past pictures of trees growing out of the chimney. So who knows of the damage of that? There's unknown costs associated with that stuff. And lastly is time. All of those unknown costs create additional time. Approvals create additional time, and time kills deals because time costs money. And whether Semperify House moves forward with this, who would be a phenomenal use for it, or if, you know, they could not move forward due to the historic preservation and you hope for another user to come through, the, unfortunately, you know, that as the building sits, it's just going to deteriorate more and more.
Move for an additional minute.
Which, I mean, again, I don't know who's been in the building, but although maintenance, obviously the owner's going to continue routine maintenance as they have, but, I mean, as it continues to deteriorate, especially now we're going into winter, I mean, it's been broken into numerous times, pipes have been ripped out, copper's been ripped out. So as it sits and deteriorates, the cost for anyone to come in makes it more prohibitive for anyone, whether, again, it's Semperify or any other user, to make it a viable project. And although it's a beautiful building, if it sits vacant and there's no one in it, eventually it won't be. And I don't know, if a private user doesn't come in and with the money to make this, you know, a livable building, who will? I, you know, the city of Urbana, or you guys, or, you know? So without a, someone with a vision like Prescott and Semperify House, you know, where does it leave this building? I, you know?
Bill Brown has a question for you.
I think on the 20% tax credit, it's not for owner-occupied, that's for income-generating property. The owner-occupied credit is a property tax freeze. So anybody that wants to generate income from that house could get that 20% credit. But if you're, a lot of our landmarks are owner-occupied, single-family houses, and they get an income, or they get a property tax freeze, which is also a really good incentive.
Has this property been put on the market?
I couldn't speak to that. Our firm was engaged to represent Semperify House, we don't represent ownership, so I couldn't speak to, you know, we found out about it because the University of Illinois was engaged or contacted by ZTA about the house. They toured the property, and due to the condition of it, had zero interest in it.
Has it been appraised?
My understanding is that it has, but again, I don't represent the property owners, or, so I can't.
So you haven't seen the appraisal?
I have not seen the appraisal.
Okay. Anybody else have a question? Eric?
So as far as you know, ZTA has not been marketing the house.
I don't know if they've been actively marketing. I know that there were, in addition to Semperify House, there were other interested parties who had looked at it, and I couldn't tell you why they went away. But so it's, it was known in, you know, the relatively small community of people who would look at this type of property or who own, currently own these types of properties in town, that it was available. So it wasn't a secret, I can, you know?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The last person is Jenny Park.
Good evening. I know this has been a long night, so I'm going to keep it brief. My name is Jenny Park, I'm an attorney at Meyer Cable, we represent Zeta Tau Alpha. Zeta Tau Alpha stands by its previously filed response and protest to the nomination and Historical Preservation Commission's finding. ZTA has invited and asked an interested buyer, its architect and broker, for the property to come and speak to you as to their interest in the property and possible development of the property. We believe that this is a positive prospect for development and use of the property. However, if council approves historical landmark designation tonight, it has been made very clear that Semperify will not be purchasing this property. So a prospective buyer who we have brought and who can make productive use of this property will not exist. We've also lost another interested buyer. We were in the midst of negotiations when the historical designation nomination came, they essentially said, "We're not interested in this property." So we've lost yet another buyer. So we believe that with this designation, it will dilute the number of potential users for this property. And ZTA has every desire and hope to sell this property, and they made their decision to sell the property in early March of 2014. They had every intention of keeping the property in the hopes that they could bring the chapter back to the U of I, but they realized that the best use for this property is to sell the property so that another developer could make use of this property, and that would be in the best interest of the community. As far as the marketing, I understand from the representative of ZTA who's also here, and if you have any additional questions, she's happy to answer any questions. They have not marketed with a broker, but they have actively reached out to the university to what they believe is a very limited niche for the use of this property, to see if there was any interest in this property. So, and that is why we've had a couple of buyers who have, we have been in negotiations with. And we hope that we can continue with that negotiation without the designation of a historical landmark because it has been made clear to the organization that it is a hindrance. And I understand that you guys have talked about the efficiency of the Historical Preservation Commission, and I don't think there's any dispute about that. The problem is that just with the historical designation creates a hindrance. And what I think the council needs to consider is not just what the findings may have been made by the Historical Preservation Committee, but also what is the viability of this property? Because I think we all want to see this property be of use and not just sit there vacant. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Eric?
We've heard that Semperify will not buy the house if the historical designation goes through. Is there a commitment to purchase the house if the historical designation does not go through?
They are waiting on the results of this hearing in order to move forward with the commitment to purchase.
Okay, so there is not a commitment in place, however?
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you so much. Well, we've heard all the testimony. So is there a motion? Charlie?
I'm going to move approval of 1404 South Lincoln, the Zeta Tau Alpha Sorority House as a historical landmark application.
I'll second.
A motion by Smythe, seconded by Ammons. Any discussion? Carol?
I was on the opposing side of this issue a year ago. And it was mainly because my understanding from the owners is that they really wanted to not only reuse it, but to maintain it in its current, well, improve its current condition, but maintain its historic nature. A year later, this application is resubmitted, and we've not seen any movement on this until this application was resubmitted. I have not been convinced at all through this entire hearing that designating it will make it unavailable, or increase the cost. I think the costs associated with repairing this building will be exactly the same, whether it's designated or not. The trees, the roots, the house, the roof, all of these things are going to cost a lot of money to repair because of the condition of the house and the length of time that the sorority has left it there. So I have not been convinced that designation is going to do any more than the, unfortunately, the gentleman who has come asking us not to designate, to drive this issue, I think, is a real concern for me. And we have no actual guarantee that they will even purchase the house. If you had come and say, I purchased this house, we are committed to doing this. My brother's a Marine currently, and he's retiring in a year. And I would love for him to come and help with something like this. This is a wonderful project, very great idea. But we have no actual commitment whatsoever outside of the desire of the city of Urbana to protect its very few historic designations. That's all that we have. And so without any real commitment at all, I think it's a little bit disingenuous to say, don't designate it, because we're maybe going to buy it. And I just, that's just not enough for me to cast a no vote on this application this time. And I hope that the sorority commits to continuing to work to find the right partner for this property. And I appreciate everybody's comments tonight. Thank you.
Diane?
Well, I was also on the side of voting no last time, but I'm not going to do that again this time. I am going to support this landmarking designation. And I toured the building today. I also sat in on the conference call with Mr. Powell on Friday, and I appreciate the time that both people took to do that. I don't think landmarking is the major obstacle to saving and protecting this building. I think things like the way it's priced is a major obstacle to protecting this building. I understand the list price is $1.6 million. Now, if the building had been maintained and updated and taken care of all this time, that might be true, but given its condition, and it's a wreck inside, it needs total extensive expensive interior renovation. It can be, it can be done, but it's going to be expensive. The way it's priced now is a real deterrent, and I think it's the major deterrent to someone coming in here. So the owners need to get realistic and price it realistically. The county assessor has this assessed at about $511,000 in 2014, and I frankly would be surprised if even that's a realistic price, given the condition of the interior and the amount of work that's going to be required. So I urge the corporate owners of this building to price it realistically, if they're serious about getting this building sold and into the hands of somebody who will repair it and reuse it. The other thing that I think we have to be, work very hard on when we move forward on this, is right here in this community, is to remain flexible and supportive if this property needs to be rezoned. I don't see this being used as a sorority or fraternity. It's zoned R7, which is university housing. It may not be university housing. So if a developer comes along who has a creative new use for this, maybe, you know, I don't know what it could be, mixed business residential, could be a bed and breakfast, it could be all sorts of things. But when it comes time for us to have to rezone this property, to allow a developer to give new life to this building, I would hope the community and the neighborhood is as supportive of that as they are of protecting this building. So I really, really hope you all turn out when we do have an opportunity to put new life into this building. And I, the last comment I want to make, one of the speakers, one of the Alpha Kappa members mentioned Mildred Spitzler Johnson. Well, her article was attached to our packet, and she spoke to this very thing. She referred to what it took to get this property rezoned in nine, in the, they had to work for four years to get this property rezoned, so they could build this 1963 addition. And she referred to the process as a dream-shattering nightmare, working with the city of Urbana, apparently. So I hope when it comes time to redevelop this building, the new developers do not experience that same dream-shattering nightmare that Ms. Johnson did, and that we can make it a smooth process. So again, I don't think landmarking is the obstacle. I think the owners need to have a realistic appreciation for what this building can be sold for, and price it so that it can be sold, and that it's financially feasible for someone to invest in it. And I'm really sorry that Semperfy is choosing to forego this opportunity if it's landmarked, because I do think it would be a great use, but...
Still love to use it if we can get it done.
Well, I'd say give it a shot, you know? Especially if your purchase price is more realistic. So go for it. Thank you.
Who's next here? Bill Brown. And then Dennis?
Yeah, I'm also go support landmarking, as I did last time. I don't think there's any argument about whether it qualifies or not, but I would disagree with Scotty that that's not our job, is just to ratify the historic preservation's determination that it qualifies. And according to the ordinance, it says, we decide whether it should be designated. It doesn't give any, any conditions about what we should base our decision on. So that means that I think we are free to look at a variety of things, including economic I think that the concern about uncertainty is probably a valid one, and I think we try to address that by making the process as transparent as possible. There's always a lot of uncertainty. You don't know what that tree in the chimney did. You don't know what you're going to find when you open a wall. There's a lot of uncertainty on when you get building permits, what kind of things you're going to have to be required to put in a restaurant sink, or whatever. But I was looking at the application for a certificate of economic hardship. There's really only two questions on here. I think that's about as, especially if you compare it to some, I've done work for the military, and compared to the bureaucracy you have to put up with in the military contracting situations, I think this would go pretty smooth. So hopefully you can find some better, some investors that understand the process a little bit better. For the certificate of appropriateness, there's really only five questions, besides, you know, your name and address, and a couple of things about the property. There's just, I mean, it's a page and a half, really. So these aren't, these aren't owner's requirements. So I think that's kind of our way to address that uncertainty. I understand, I understand that. And another way we can address the uncertainty is actually, would be to go ahead and designate this year, so it doesn't come up a year after year after year. So that way, there is certainty, at least for whoever's buying the house, will be able to, will know that it's designated, and they'll have to go this extra step when they start to, start to make changes to the outside. Again, when you look at the chart, what's, what actually would have to go to the HPC to get approval? It's roof, windows, if you want to put siding on the house, you know, it's not a lot of things. So again, I just, I'm sorry if this seems like an owner's process to your investors, but I would look for different investors, and I hope you can make it work, because actually, I'm a product of the GI Bill. I probably wouldn't be here if my dad hadn't gone through the GI Bill and been the first in his family to graduate from college. So I hope this works out for you, but I don't, I'm, like Diane, I don't think that historic designation is a problem.
Dennis?
I was supportive of the nomination last year when it first came to us. I don't see that the case has changed too much. I agree with Carol Ammons that, that I'm disappointed that the current owners, the ZTA Foundation or organization, haven't shown some initiative to initiate repairs in some manner. Just securing a building and doing nothing else isn't really what I would call an aggressive way to prepare a building for resale. And from the reports I've heard from Diane Marlin, who went and inspected the building today, apparently, if there's still dirty dishes left from the last time that the last service was done at the fraternity dinner in the sink, and the ZTA has never even removed the dirty dishes from the sink, and they're now 15 years old, or 10 years old, I think that doesn't show good stewardship. So that's beside the point. I think that there are reasonable leeway for doing the improvements that are going to be required in the ordinance, or any kind of improvements to the building. We've seen the approval of replacement tiles at the hotel where slate, an original roofing was removed, and it was replaced by modern, appropriate roofing material. So there are ways that the buildings can be stabilized and improved that are flexible and yet meet the needs of historic preservation, as far as general image and appearance. And if we realize that nothing that occurs within the, inside the building, as far as the replacement of fixtures, the movement of walls, the realignment of space, is under the jurisdiction of this ordinance, and that there's totally free and open ability by the new owner, whoever they may be, to reconfigure the building to their need, I think that this shows that this is not a restrictive ordinance, and that any question that might arise when you're looking for funding, I think just a little bit of education about the value of historic preservation, the value of this building to the community, and the potential of getting, having, building construction fees and building permit waivers granted to you because you've done the historic landmarking, may certainly be the plus for the, a plus element in the sale and the fundraising for the building. I stand still supportive of this nomination, because so many people in the community have come forward and expressed their interest in the building as well.
Okay. Eric?
I will also vote in support of the nomination. I guess that it's, I guess the vote will not be quite so dramatic, but I do want to, you know, this has had the flavor of, so far, in an adversarial procedure, and it's been a conflict of ideas, but it need not be a conflict of people. When we leave here tonight, we all will have a common goal, and that is that this building should be preserved, that it should get new life with new use. I think that, I hope that you've heard, I hope everybody here has heard, that we are committed, the city is committed, the historic preservation is committed, to making any accommodation that preserves the historical character, especially the exterior of the building. That we do want to streamline that process. We don't want to hurt anybody financially. The evidence is, and this, we have a track record on this. We have a track record on this. The evidence is overwhelming that this has not only been good for the quality of life in Urbana, but for many communities, and I believe it's been true of Urbana also, it's been good for property values in Urbana, including the values of the properties that are so designated. So after we're done here tonight, and we've kind of, and we have settled the issue that we are arguing about, I hope that we can find a basis to work together.
Mike Madigan?
Okay. Well, I'm not going to belabor this. Obviously, the deal is done. I just want to say a couple of things, though. I would agree with a lot of you folks in saying that, frankly with everyone, in saying that nobody wants to see this property remain in a dilapidated state. Nobody wants to see this property torn down. It is, it is a very good-looking building. It is an important building. The problem here is that to vote for designation, we've been told very clearly, will hinder progress toward that goal. I don't think it's just about the Semperfy organization, and whether or not they've made a commitment. I think it's about at least two other developers who have, very reputable local developers, who have decided to look at this, but then take a pass after the filing, the refiling of this designation ordinance. And my fear is that this will continue. I think this is the wrong decision. I'm not even going to argue whether or not the building should be designated. I got a very thoughtful and well-reasoned email from Bryan Adams, which really kind of clarified the whole Royer thing for me. So I'm past that. What I'm concerned with now is, is that building going to sit there for another 10 years, waiting for a buyer, because it's designated? And, you know, I respect my colleague from Ward Seven, but I don't think admonishing the owners about what it's worth and trying to fire-sale it is the solution. I think looking for a buyer at a fair value, and we already have one interested, if it is not designated, is the way to go. So I will be voting against this for that reason, and also just to continue to respect the property rights of the owner, who is continuing to vehemently object to the designation.
Okay. Charlie?
I'll be quick. In answer to something Diane raised earlier, I had asked the staff earlier today about options for the building, you know, do we need to be looking at how our zoning works with adaptive reuse of R7, and probably something we want to look at. But in this particular case, this property is more than half an acre, so it actually falls under our PUD ordinance. So it could do an approach very similar to what was done on, at Iowa, and Iowa and Lincoln, where there was an entire building replaced. But there are a lot of options that are available under the, under the planned unit development. So, you know, condos, rental property, while preserving the outside, are completely legitimate items that are on the table here. And so what I would suggest, that on the way out the door, I'd suggest the Zeta Tau folks, Zeta Tau Alpha folks, get Frank Butterfield's card from the State Historic Association, because he has some people that are interested in working on exactly these kinds of properties. So I think there are buyers out there, they just haven't been approached from the historical side, and the contacts are out there. So finally, I think the issue of demolition through neglect is what concerns me. This is in my ward. I've seen too many other properties that, that over time, and we've got one coming down right over here, demolition through neglect. It's taken down way too many good buildings in this community. And by doing the designation, I think we raise the threshold for demolition a lot higher. That's why we have the delay in our demolition ordinance, you know? We have the demolition delay issue, was so that we can do exactly this kind of thing to keep these kinds of things from happening. So I think we raised the threshold here. You know, a year ago, we were in the same position, fool me once, applies. And so I don't buy that. I think we need to move forward, and I wish this were unanimous, but it's clearly not going to be. But I'm glad that, that there's a better chance now, I think, of preserving this building than there would have been if we don't designate it. it. Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
No.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. It required five votes. It got six votes. So thank you all. Next is Resolution Number 2015-01-001R, a resolution ratifying execution of an amended agreement concerning the provision and administration of Metropolitan Computer-Aided Dispatch by and between the City of Champaign, the City of Urbana, Champaign County, Champaign County Sheriff, the Board of Trustees of the University of Illinois, and the Village of Randtul. And this is a minor change, and I will let Jim Simon explain it.
Actually, there's no change to the agreement that you have considered and technically approved. At your April 21 meeting of last year, the amendment, amended agreement was presented, and there was various discussion regarding funding and fees and all. And ultimately, the agreement was passed by virtue of a motion. The original agreement that was amended was adopted by resolution. Illinois law requires that whatever act approved the original agreement must also be at the same level, i.e. a resolution for any amendment to that agreement. So all this seeks to do is three things. One, go back and clean up what was not done. Two, to ratify the agreement that's already been executed by Urbana. And three, ratify to the extent any conduct has occurred in connection with the amended agreement to simply ratify that.
Second? Okay. Motion by Smythe, seconded by Ammons. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you all very much. There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.